All right, good evening and welcome to Heartland Township. And this is the Planning Commission meeting of June 11th. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the Plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioner Newsom, would you take over, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Murphy, here. Commissioner Mitchell, here. Commissioner Grissom, here. Trustee Kalaney, here. I see that Secretary Voight is not here tonight. Chairperson Newsom and Vice Chair Newsom, Chairperson Fox.
We're here.
We're here.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, item four would be approval of our meeting agenda.
I make a motion to approve our meeting agenda of June 11th, 2015.
Support.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Grissom, a second from Commissioner Mitchell. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say aye, motion carries. Next up, item five, approval of our meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kalaney, a second from Commissioner Grissom to approve the meeting minutes of May 28, 2015. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say aye, motion carries. Next up is item six, this is call to the public. If you are here for item seven, which is the public hearing on the Fiddler's Grove condominium development, save your questions. There'll be an opportunity during item seven for you to come up and give us the questions relating to that topic. So if there's anything but item seven, and you'd like to come forward, now's the time. All right, I thought so. So, moving on to item seven, this is a public hearing. I'll just take a moment and explain to you how a public hearing works here in Heartland. What we'll do is we'll start out in a moment, we'll open the public hearing, we'll turn the floor over to our planning director, who's going to give us a real brief overview of the project. We'll invite the applicant to come up and give us a brief overview of the project. They'll go back to their seat, and then we'll open the floor up for you to come up and ask your questions or any comments that you want to make. During that time, we won't do a lot of interaction, we'll just get your information, the questions you have, and then we'll close the public hearing when you are done with your comments. And then we'll bring the applicant back up, and we'll start the site plan review, and we'll get all of your questions answered at that time. So it'll keep it moving, it'll keep it organized, and it tends to work well for us. So with that being said, we'll open the public hearing at 7:04 for the applicant Chestnut Development for a proposal to develop and construct 25 detached condominium units on nine vacant acres on the south side of M-59, just east of Cullen Road, tax ID number 47082910009. And the applicant is in step six of the 12-step process required for a plan development in Heartland, so they're about halfway there. And for those of you that want to learn a little bit more about the plan development process in Heartland, you can go to the Heartland Township website, which is heartlandtp.com. There's a planning and zoning button, if you click on that, click on zoning ordinance, and then just go to Article 3, page 38, or just search "plan development," and that'll explain to you the whole process that the applicant has gone through. And just for the record, all the public notice requirements for this public hearing have been met. So what I'd like to do at this time is turn it over to our planning director, David Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Planning Commission. Good evening, applicant. Good evening to everyone in our audience. This is the required public hearing for the preliminary site plan for a plan development. The applicant is Chestnut Development, Mr. Gronow. The name of the proposed development is Fiddler Grove. What is being proposed is 25 detached condominium units on a, what is currently a vacant nine-acre parcel on the south side of M-59, just east of Cullen Road. This is a development and a proposal that's come before this planning commission a few times prior to this evening. Originally, the Chair is right, that the plan development process is a six-step process, but since each one of those steps needs to go before the planning commission, the Township Board, it's the concept plan, the preliminary plan, and the final site plan. And the concept plan's already been before the planning commission, before the Township Board, and now they are at the preliminary site plan stage at the planning commission. If and when this plan gets forwarded to the Township Board by this planning commission, then the Township Board will have an opportunity to make a final decision on the preliminary site plan, and then this applicant would then be back before this planning commission for the final site plan. So, a minimum of six meetings. Now, this particular concept plan for these 25 units came before this planning commission earlier this spring, and then went before our Township Board subsequent to that. But even prior to that, this particular piece of property has been under control by this particular applicant, and went through a conceptual review last year for a different layout. And based on the comments he received for that layout, he came back this spring with this particular concept, got feedback from this planning commission, from the Township Board, and now has enhanced that plan, gone back to his engineer, and enhanced the engineering to get to this preliminary site plan stage. For the procedures of the plan development process, when you get to the preliminary site plan at the planning commission, you're required to have a public hearing. So that's why a lot of you probably got the notice in your mailbox, and maybe saw the notice in the newspaper. When we have a public hearing, we are required by state law to put that notice in the newspaper and send a letter to every property owner within 300 feet of the property being discussed. The 25 units are a detached condominium, and that's key. It's not a site condominium like a lot of the more recent residential developments in the Heartland Township, such as Autumn Woods, such as San Marino, which neighbor this particular property. This is what most folks would think of as a traditional condominium, where you own your walls in, and everything on the exterior, whether it be the siding, or the roof, or the shingles, or the driveway, or the grass outside, those are all general common element of the condominium association, and they're owned and maintained collectively by the condominium The proposal is for a single cul-de-sac off of M-59, one way in, one way out, and each one of the 25 units would take access off of that cul-de-sac. The planning department did a review at the conceptual stage, and that review was considered by this planning commission and then by the Township Board earlier this year. The planning department subsequently did a review of the preliminary site plans in middle, and our review letter is dated June 4, 2015. Included with our planning department's review letter is also a review letter by our Township Engineering Consultant, by our Department of Public Works, and by our Fire Marshal. Our Township Attorney is also plugged into this development, because if and when this project gets to final sites, plan review stage, the applicant will be required to provide a development agreement as part of the plan development process, and also a master deed for this condominium. And it's at that point that our Township Attorney will be taking a close look at the legal documentation for a proposed condominium development. The planning department's review letter, that as the Chair mentioned, I will do my best to go over as briefly as I can, covers a lot of ground. We go into who the applicant is, and a description of the site, some of the history of how this project got to this point on this evening, and hopefully I've tried to convey that already, what the development procedure is, a general overview of the project, the 25 units, the single point of access, a description of the units themselves, the density, the setback from the road, the setback from one another, the setback from the perimeter property lines, the proposed density. We speak to the access off of M-59, and related to that, the traffic generation for this proposed development. I know anytime something's proposed along M-59, folks are always interested in the traffic aspects. We also talk to, speak to the internal circulation, both for vehicles and for pedestrians. Along the way, as we speak to all those things, and when I say "we," I mean my department, we offer comments to this planning commission, recommendations, things that we see that are issues that are worth discussion. We speak to the design details for the entire development. One of the requirements for a plan development, and really for any residential development in Heartland Township, is that you provide a minimum of open space, and that has been a topic that was discussed at the conceptual stage, how much open space is being provided in this development. Landscaping, and our review of the applicant's proposed landscape plan comprises a significant proportion of our review. We look at the perimeter landscaping, the landscaping around the outside of this proposed development, the interior landscaping, landscaping around the detention base, and landscaping around the frontage, and provide our comments of where the landscaping doesn't meet a strict application of the zoning ordinance, but in some of those cases, the applicant is proposing to retain the existing vegetation, the trees along the perimeter, in lieu of new vegetation. So, the applicant is proposing to, rather than knocking down existing trees only to plant new ones, to keep the existing vegetation and enhance it with additional vegetation in order to provide the screening that is required for residential developments such as this, when it is adjacent to lower-density residential developments, such as Autumn Woods and such as the San Marino Meadows. So the planning department's letter provides a lot of comments on the landscaping, and certainly points out where the landscaping may be deficient. We speak to the impact on residential developments, and then we get into what's called recognizable benefits. So because this is a plan development, the applicant is looking for some deviations from a strict application of the zoning ordinance, things like the, excuse me, the setback requirements, the planned density for this property, the lack of a second point of access, the fact that there are more units proposed on this private road than what is typically allowed for a single-point-of-access private road. Our zoning ordinance says that when there's more than 24 units, then you are required to have a second point of access. The applicant is proposing 25. The planning commission does have the flexibility with the plan development process to grant deviations such as that, but the trade-off for the developer is that they have to go above and beyond what would be required for, what the minimum requirement would be. So the way they go above and beyond is to offer recognizable benefits, and that's a requirement for the plan development process. The applicant's offer of recognizable benefits has to do with the infrastructure extensions he's offering to make. Specifically, he's proposing to extend the existing 12-inch water main that currently terminates at his east property line, take it in through his development, obviously serve the houses within his development, but then bring it through the existing common element along the west perimeter of Autumn Woods. He would bore under the trees in an effort to preserve the existing vegetation, so that we can, A, provide a loop to Autumn Woods. So Autumn Woods' existing water service, there's a stub right there in that common space. What this extension of the water main would do would be to connect to that stub, so that what you have is a loop. And a loop is always a good thing. It does two things. One, it provides redundancy, so that there's less of an opportunity for service outages if there's ever a problem, and you have to turn a valve off over here, the waters can still get through the loop over on that end. And also, it enhances fire protection, for the same reason. If there's an issue with the water over here, when you have that loop, the hydrants can still be served when you have that loop. Otherwise, what we have out there at Autumn Woods now is a dead-end main. And if there was ever a problem, not having that loop could, A, cause a problem for fire service, B, cause a problem for interruptions in service if there was ever some issues upstream in the pipe. So long story short, having the loop in the water system is a good thing, and the applicant would contend that that is his recognizable benefit, that is his effort for going above and beyond with this plan development. And that's something that this planning commission, and eventually our Township Board, will have to take under consideration as the trade-off for the applicant not meeting the strict standards of the zoning ordinance. As I mentioned earlier, if and when we get to the final site plan review stage, that would be when the applicant would offer a development agreement, where we would memorialize those recognizable benefits, among other things, and we would also be looking at a master deed for this condominium association. As I mentioned, this plan was reviewed by our Department of Public Works, who looks at water and sewer connections, our Township Engineer, who also looks at the engineering involved with those water and sewer connections, but also looks at things such as the road construction and the stormwater management. The Heartland Deerfield Fire Marshal took a close look at this plan, and we're likely going to discuss this more, because we've had continuing discussions with him and the Fire Chief beyond the letter that was submitted by him dated May 7. We've had subsequent conversations to that, and we'll likely get into what those conversations entailed and what the outcome of those conversations was. So having said all that, the planning department is obligated to offer a recommendation to this planning commission. The planning department's recommendation is that if the applicant can satisfy the planning commission on a host of issues, and that is a big if, if he can satisfy the planning commission, then the planning department would be willing to offer a recommendation for the planning commission to forward this on to the Township Board for their recommendation of approval, subject to a number of conditions. But as I mentioned, there's a lot of ifs. The planning commission would have to make a number of determinations on a lot of shortcomings within the plan, and we can talk more about what the planning department sees some of those shortcomings to be. The last thing I would say is that there are some things that the planning department's review letter did not cover, and it's a good reason that these things come before the planning commission and the board, to get as many eyeballs on this plan as we can. I know that we would want to talk about the design of the retention wall, and also the type of curbing that is proposed for the road, and particularly with that curbing that gets into the Fire Marshal's comments of emergency access for this development. So I hope that that was a brief enough overview of our 15-page review letter, and I'm certainly open to answer more questions, but if the planning commission so chooses, they could have the option to turn it over to the applicant for their overview.
Okay. I think what we will do is, we'll ask the applicant to come up, if you would like to give us a brief overview of your project that you would like to present, then we'll ask you to take your seat, we'll bring the public up, you can ask all your questions, and then we'll bring the applicant back up, and the planning director, applicant, and the planning commission will discuss your questions, along with planning department's letter and any questions we have. So I'll turn it over. If you could introduce yourself.
Yes, David Leclair with Livingston Engineering, and Steve Gronow from Chestnut Development is with me this evening. Dave, Mr. Campbell did outline the project very good. As he mentioned, we were before both the planning commission and the Board this past spring, and I think both bodies thought that it was a viable project with some things to look at. And a couple of the things that I would like to just discuss briefly are some things that were brought up between the planning commission and the Board, and I think there was really two major items. One, they were concerned with buffering from the neighbors. We do have San Marino on the west side of this development, which has larger lots. We've got Autumn Woods on the east side and the south side, which has smaller lots, although the homes are not quite as close as the ones are in the proposed development that we're here to talk about this evening. The second item was pedestrian circulation. They had some concerns about pedestrian movement. We had a walking trail on the project, and they weren't quite sure whether or not that was the best method to move people around within the development. So if I could point out a couple of things. First, on the buffering aspect, we did do a complete tree survey on the site. We picked up all the trees around the perimeter of the site, and that, this is the landscape plan, there's also a tree survey in your packet. Most of the trees were along the west side of the property, along the San Marino side. There were quite a few along the east side, too, not nearly as many, and not very many along the south side. With respect to the buffering, there was some concern from both the planning commission and the Board. Some of the units we have in this area were closer to San Marino than a lot of the other units. We were asked to take a look at that, to see what we may be able to offer to better buffer that. And in that regard, we've done a couple of things. If you could go back to the regular plan, Dave. The first place we started, and it's kind of hard to see, there you go, that's a little bit better. The unit that's closest to San Marino is this unit right here. We started by aligning that unit up on a property line, so that it's not directly behind either home, and then kind of worked our way around in both directions, so that the rest of the units were kind of at an angle to the units over in San Marino. Another thing that we've done is increased the landscaping back in that area. As you can see on the landscape plan, there is, most of the vegetation is in this area. There are some gaps in here. We focused a lot of our new landscaping to fill in these gaps, to increase that buffer between San Marino and this development. A few other things with regard to buffering on the adjacent properties. This area up in here is about 10 foot lower than this area up in here. We do have a grading plan that's been submitted with the property. If you're familiar with the property, you'll notice there is a nice high bank in here. This stays high. In order to cut this in, we're kind of carving out this area, and our grading goes back, you know, into here. And again, these units are quite a bit lower than this property line, so there's going to be some natural buffering from the work that we're doing, in addition to the tree vegetation line that's there. On the back, up against Autumn Woods in the back, we do have this detention pond. We've got, we believe, is a nice amount of landscaping in the back here. The detention pond in itself is going to offer some buffering. The densities, although this project is a little bit higher density than Autumn Woods in that area, they do have five lots of ours. We also have five lots, if you include these two side lots. So the density is pretty similar to Autumn Woods in this particular area. Over on the east side, again up in here, we've got a detention pond. We do offer quite a bit more area between Autumn Woods on this side. In this area, we have, again, focused some more landscaping in this area with the existing trees that are there. This is open space in Autumn Woods, where there's a sanitary sewer pump station. So again, we feel like we've tried to address the planning commission's concern and the Board's concerns with regards to the neighbors in those particular areas by use of our grading plan and our landscape plan. As far as pedestrian circulation, there was some talk that maybe, we have a walking path around here right now, that maybe that wasn't the best idea. Mr. Gronow and I have had quite a bit of discussion about that, and I would like to offer the Township, in lieu of that, to put sidewalks along one side of the street. Again, this is more of a retirement-type market. We don't anticipate there's going to be a lot of kids here, so there's not going to be a lot of backyard activity, and we thought it may be beneficial also to not introduce any people in the backyards of these units, both for the benefit of the people here and the neighbors. And we feel it may be a better suggestion to put sidewalks along the road and kind of channel everybody down to this open space park that we have in here. And when we get to the final site plan, we will offer you some more information on that. We are going to have some benches, make this a really nice community amenity in this area. I think those are the major items that the planning commission had. Mr. Campbell pretty much described everything else quite nicely as far as the development, and we'd be happy to entertain any questions that yourself or the public may have.
Okay, all right. I think what we'd like to do at this time is invite the public to come up, ask your questions, make any comments you'd like to make. We'd like your name and your address, real quick. We will document it all. As I said, there won't be a lot of exchanges with you at that time. We'll make the notes. As we go through the site plan, we'll make sure we ask your questions and get those answered for you. So if there's anybody that would like to ask a question or make a statement in regard to this project, please come forward. Good evening.
My name is Tim Berry. I live in San Marino, 1902 Clover Ridge, which is Lot 62, which is right in the corner where that water main's going through. So my concerns are, you know, it looks like that is right behind my property, it says 400 feet is going towards, so I'd like to know what that's going to do to the landscaping. It was addressed a little bit, but, you know, there's some big trees in there, how much needs to be taken out to put a 12-inch main in there? That's a big concern.
Okay.
And I guess to follow up on that, it says they're trying to maintain all the trees, you know, are they gonna leave all the trees in that buffer area? So those are my questions.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm John Wyeth. I live at 1944 Clover Ridge, and I would say my property backs up to number 10 there. I would definitely question the setback requirement there. I think you're, by butting up against any of the neighboring properties, you're really losing the character of the developments that were put in place decades ago. Where in, being in San Marino, you have over acre lots, and I really, I think having some, a housing unit, whether it's a condo or a house, within 50 feet of my property line, or any property line along the west, south, or east of this development is probably not an appropriate use. I would question the density a little bit. I don't think it's in line with, in concert with, the two developments around it. I'm not opposed to the use as a concept of a condo. My understanding is they're going to be higher-end condos, although you can't guarantee that those would be retirement community. I think they're going to be open to whoever can afford to purchase them, so you have no guarantee that it's going to be used as a retirement community, so you don't have that guarantee of kids. And I'm not even saying I would be against that by any means, but I know the developer's stating that, but that's what they're stating here, they're going to be selling to who can pay the price that they would be interested in. I would think reducing the density, still maintaining the character of the development, would probably be more appropriate for this property, where it's unique and small footprint within the area, and in conjunction with the surrounding developments. I don't think it's the Township's obligation to allow the developer to put as many units as he possibly can on the property. These property, each unit would be served by about a third of an acre, which is, again, less than Autumn Woods, and also significantly less than San Marino.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Casper. I live at 1464 Four Seasons Drive. I am in the corner unit of Autumn Woods. Guess that would be the northwest corner of my lot, the southwest corner of the development. I likewise, to my fellow neighbors in San Marino, bought that particular lot at a premium because of the location to the vegetation along that line that divides our two properties. So I would be very concerned and curious to hear the plans for how they're going to maintain that, to the point where I would like to know that can be included in the development agreement with the developer, that if anything is lost, that is replaced. The second point or question I have is, what are they doing in terms of water runoff? Again, because that site does slope down towards our property, so I am concerned about how that is going to be managed. I am curious to know, again, what the southernmost dimension is, from the southernmost unit to the property line, the southern property line of the development. I would also like to know the plan for the detention pond at the south, if that's planned to be a continuously wet pond, or if that is just to be used as a temporary runoff that will drain itself out. I'm not interested in having a fly breeding ground in my backyard. And I guess the last question I do have, again, because I have been through a couple builds in our married life, my wife and I, we're looking for some, I guess we have a question on the financial viability of the builder. We've been burned before by builders who come in with grandiose plans and then wind up leaving town bankrupt. So we would like to know what the financial backing is for this particular development. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Joe Mack. I live at 1472 Four Seasons Drive. My biggest concern is the boring that goes through my backyard, and the very mature trees that are in that back, and what happens if the boring goes south and they can't get the full 400 feet to create the new drain and the flow through, along with all the statements that my neighbor Jeff made. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Boris Taford, and I live at 568 Inverness, which is not in Heartland. It's down there, down the street in Highland. And I just wanted to make a comment that we've been trying for a number of years, actually about four years, to find a way to move into Heartland, and our daughter currently lives there. And we stumbled across this last week. I was doing some readings about things. We looked in Irish Hills and a few things like that. So to us, this kind of a, I don't like the word retirement, but this kind of a location would certainly suit the needs that we have, and I look forward to it. Am I allowed to ask a question?
No, go ahead, ask.
Could you tell me where the water supply is from that serves that area?
We'll get that for you. I'll write that question down for you. How's that?
Yes. So that's our comment. We've been looking for the kind of a place to move into. We looked around the San Marino area quite a bit a few years ago, and just never really found anything that was suitable in size for my wife and I. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone else? There's still time. Okay, last call. Okay, now that the questions are done, we'll close the public hearing at 7:30, and I think what I'd like to do is ask the applicant to come back up to the table, or come to the table. And I think the best way to handle this is probably go through Dave's review letter, and we'll run through some conversations and points that we have. Planning commissioners, please remember to bring up the public's questions as we get to those areas. So if we take a look at the planning department's letter dated June 4, and we start there, we've pretty much covered item one, which is basically who the applicant is and the site dis- site description with the nine acres on the south side of M59, and some of the site history. There have been several proposals besides residential that have been thought of on this site before this came, just as some background to that.
Yeah, if I may, that's worth mentioning. So this property at one time was owned by the Detroit Presbyterian. A lot of you probably know this. And their intent was always to build a church there. Obviously, that...those intentions changed. They put it on the market, and Mr. Grono was the buyer.
And we even had a couple informal meetings over the years for assisted living and something else.
There's a memory care facility.
Okay.
And then probably some other things before my time.
Right. The property has garnered a lot of interest, given its location, its proximity to M59 and 23, and given the zoning that it had, and the owner was interested in selling it. Mr. Grono is the individual that stepped forward and has actually brought the plan forward versus some of the other concepts that have come informally throughout the years. There were no public meetings on those. We talked a little bit about the plan development procedure, which is on page two of Dave's letter, and that the applicant is at the preliminary stage with the planning commission. And so I think it's probably appropriate just to move on to page three, item A, which is the general topics. And Dave, why don't you address a little bit, or maybe Mr. Leclerc, a little bit about the lot with, and how they're comparing with some of the neighboring lot with?
The lots, I mean, I guess lot is...
They're not really lots.
Yes, not really lots.
Right.
These units are 40...or 42 foot wide.
Right.
There's 20 foot between them, which I believe, from conversation at the last planning commission, is the same as the minimums in Autumn Woods. We talked about density at some of the past meetings. You know, the density is higher than it is on Autumn Woods. The one difference being Autumn Woods has a lot of wetland. This site is virtually 100% upland. So if you really compare the upland to upland, I think we're probably much closer to the density in Autumn Woods. Certainly, we're more density than San Marino due to the west. I think they're one-acre lots, so that development is substantially less dense than this one, absolutely.
Okay. Also in there is the discussion on the sidewalk. You had brought that topic up in your preview here.
Yes, yes. Again, if it's a pleasure of the township and the planning commission board, we would certainly entertain, you know, a sidewalk. We think a sidewalk for this number of units, limited number of units, on one side of the street would be sufficient, again, to try to channel people down to that open area, the island area at the end of the road. Again, I mean, this is not an age-restricted community. Anybody can buy in here. However, these types of homes typically attract older people with no kids because there's really no backyard. You don't have a place to put a swing set. So just by the nature of the development, you generally get older people without kids, and we're not anticipating a lot of those. We do feel that we have a nice park area down at the end of that street that would accommodate any kids that do happen to live there by chance or come to visit, and think that's a great place to channel people. And if it's the pleasure of the township, we would be happy to do that with a sidewalk in lieu of a walking path.
So I would have a question if this was the time. So did you say just one side of the street for a sidewalk?
Yeah.
Can you use your pointer, if we can mag down a little bit, to see what is really meant by which side and from where to where?
Well, we want to get everybody, you know, this is the area where we're going to have some benches, and when we get to final site plan, you'll see a much more extensive landscaping for this area. And it's big enough for kids to play, you know, for people to walk their dogs, whatnot. We would probably put sidewalk down, I think, on this side of the street and just bring it to a location right here and then cross it into this area. Certainly, these people here just would need to walk across to it, and that would also give, you know, people that wanted to take their dog for a walk, they could certainly walk up to M59 and back down.
So I guess what I'd like to interject is my concern about a sidewalk...I'm happy to see that you're talking about a sidewalk, because I think that's something new, as you offered that instead of the...instead of the path with woodchips on it.
Right.
Is that the walkability of the township that we're all interested in here in Heartland Township for the safety of the citizens, but additionally, if...and I know whether it's going to be a retirement community or not, you know, anyone can come in here, obviously, and whether there are children, but if it is a retirement community, if you've ever had a retiree or someone like my father, for example, who just underwent surgery, who is...part of his rehab is being in a wheelchair or in a walker. So in a case like that, if we want residents that would live in these homes, they have the freedom to leave their home and walk around and get their exercise, or just to enjoy the area. My concern is that being on one side versus on both sides, and it's really then not...if it's just...if it's just going to come down to the...the third part of it, it's really not to service all the homes. So we'd be expecting people to walk in the streets. So, correct? So if they are walking in the streets and they are under those circumstances that I mentioned, even a child is in a wheelchair, I think that we're putting them at risk of being out in the area of vehicular traffic. So I like the idea of a sidewalk throughout the area. I'm glad you did add, you know, add what you had commented on, especially over the wooded...the woodchip trail.
Yeah, I don't know that if there is sidewalk on one side of the street, you know, somebody that lived, you know, for instance, in a unit here, I would anticipate they would cross the road to get the sidewalk, especially somebody that had a handicap, who needed a hard surface to walk on. I think that would be much more desirable than walking down the street, for certain. And we are also, I forgot to mention, we are extending sidewalk across the front of the property along M59. There is a sidewalk in Autumn Woods. It does not go all the way down to 23. There are some gaps in it, but I think the hope is that one day it will get down to the commercial centers in the township. But we are putting sidewalk also along our frontage, that this interior sidewalk, if the township desires that, would connect to.
So the folks that did live on the other side of the street would still have to cross the street?
They would have to cross the street, yes.
To get the sidewalk on the other street to use that sidewalk.
Right, right, right. But again, I mean, this development is 25 units. We don't have any through traffic from anyplace else, not a significant amount of traffic. But yes, they would have to, under that scenario.
So before this meeting, I took a drive-through to Heartland, and I went through the other condo areas that have been called that, and those condo areas did have sidewalks on both sides of the street.
Yeah, some developments do, and I'm not sure how many units were in those. Quite frankly, I mean, we've done a lot of developments, and I've seen them go both ways, some on one side, some on...
So it would be the one behind Target, and then the two on east side of 23? There's two of them actually, just north of...
Right, Woodcliff, North Woodcliff, Cullen Ridge.
And Woodcliff Village. So that...those are comments I wanted to make in regards to sidewalks.
Any additional comments on sidewalks, support?
Well, maybe you could just explain a little bit why you're only putting it down one side of the street, not all the way around.
These units are 30 feet from the back curb. I guess to give us more room for parking in front, and really, didn't quite see the need to have sidewalk on both sides. Again, we're only talking 25 units. It's not like we've got 50, 100 units, 200 units. The traffic on this is pretty minimal. And certainly with the age that we're anticipating, I don't think we're going to even get the kinds of traffic that you would in a, you know, a younger age community. And we, you know, thought that one side would be sufficient for the activity in this particular community, given its circumstances.
It might be a nicer walk to be able to walk on both sides of the road. Don't know that it matters on the...Mike? Sue? One side, two side? Joe?
I think he's right. When you have that many homes, you're only talking 25 homes, you know, I think one side is probably...is probably a good idea. I can get it satisfied. If you're just going on, I don't know, I see why you've needed them both sides. Then it also adds a lot of impervious surface, which, if we can avoid some of that and allow some of it down to absorb some of the stormwater, then you don't have the, you know, the other issues related to the impervious surface. I could go either way, actually, without having any altogether, if we're having one kind of thing involved, which is my opinion.
And I agree. I do want to have a sidewalk, but I do feel, just because there's only 25 units, that it on one side would work, you know, for me, and that it connects up to M59, you know, it's a network.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with those comments. It seems like it's just a feeder to, you know, get out and around the community without having to use a vehicle or anything like that, although it's...you can't necessarily make it all the way down to the commercial centers yet, but yeah, one side I think is fine.
Okay, Tom?
I know, I like both sides. Stay with that.
Okay.
That was probably pretty clear.
All right, I think on this one, it's probably going down one. All right, so one plan to the...one change to the site plan will be that sidewalks will be included on one side, leading to the cul-de-sac.
In lieu of the woodchip.
In lieu of the woodchip, and so we're going...and we also need...so we had to need to add the sidewalk, we need to delete the woodchip ban trail. Okay, I believe that was all in that particular paragraph. Still on page three, the product...proposed density of the project. It is substantially denser than, obviously, San Marino, but we also have got some conversation to have about the comparison to Autumn Woods, and how do you react to all of that? That would be bottom of page three, top of page four of the letter.
Who's reacting? Are you looking?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm looking for Mr. Leclerc's in regards to the...your density is 2.7 units per acre, so basically three San Marino substantially more, and Autumn Woods at 1.9, so just under two.
Right, right. You know, as I previously mentioned, obviously, we're higher density than San Marino. I mean, there's no question about that.
Right.
I think the density, and I did not do the density calculations on it, but I generally, densities, net densities include wetlands. I don't know if there was a quote-unquote density for upland area. I know Autumn Woods does have a lot of unusable wetland, regulated wetland areas within it that are not even used to this day, as far as I know, as parks or anything. I don't know what that comparison would be, but I think you would find it to be much closer to the density that we're proposing in this development.
Dave, do you remember how you got the calculation?
I went by gross density. In terms of comparison between the...so, yeah, just gross density. I took the...
Number of acres.
Number of acres on this property, the total number of acres within Autumn Woods, and I based on gross density, which is, as I pointed out in the letter.
If I could just give you a little...show you some of the areas in Autumn Woods that I'm familiar with. This, I'm quite sure, is all wetlands. This area in here is wetland. This is detention ponds. There is a sanitary sewer pump station in this open area. This is all upland, I believe, but it is along M59, so...and, you know, then they have a strip of open space behind these units. So as far as usable open space, I really don't think you would find that it would be that much different.
Okay. I do know that we did discuss this for the public's benefit at our conceptual meeting and did go through the calculation, and we're accepting of the 25 units on the project, given consideration for other amenities and other parts of the program that they're presenting, which we'll get through as we get through the review letter this evening. Item C, 59.
I guess I have a comment related to the density. And I...can you tell me again what the average, like, sell price that you're aiming at for this development?
Low threes.
The low 300s for 25 homes there. I don't think it's going to affect anybody's property value at all in the surrounding areas, so...I think that's what people mostly have a concern with, with density, is how it affects the neighboring property values. And if we're talking about 25 homes and the low 300s, I don't think it's going to affect anybody's property value. It'll probably improve it, to tell you the truth.
You build a significantly different home.
Yeah. This is a higher-end product that we're looking at.
Are these all...do you see my story?
All ranches.
All ranches.
There is an option to add a bedroom if someone would like to do.
Are there any that are going to have blockouts?
Hopefully, I guess.
Okay.
About maybe a third or half, maybe, and then the rest hopefully all day later. All the lower levels are finished.
So I guess we're on to 59 access. We've all talked about the access point itself and D being traffic generation. MDOT did review the traffic counts and the increase here, and our understanding is that it does not warrant any additional improvements. M59 minus deceleration lane.
Correct, not as far as MDOT is concerned.
Correct.
Now, if the township wanted to explore road improvements off-site as a recognizable benefit of a planned development, then that is a conversation that could be... But the road agency that has jurisdiction over that road, which is Michigan Department of Transportation, is not requiring any more than the acceleration-deceleration taper at their driveway on the south side of 59.
Okay. Anybody have comments for that?
No.
It's a little bit of a concern to me because that stretch of 59 seems to be overpopulated a little bit, and people are on the shoulder of the road a lot right through there. So especially during peak times, I gotta exit my development out to 59, it's a little bit tough. So that's a concern to me. I know that there's further work that's being planned on 59, but that's a little bit of a concern.
It's no secret that that stretch of 59 is over its capacity for a two-lane state highway.
Isn't there, in front of Autumn Woods, on the...
North side, right.
There's a whole...
Bypass.
Bypass. And is that what the concern here is, because that just doesn't extend...that bypass doesn't extend down to...
It does not, but Dave, do you want to explain MDOT's reasoning for not wanting the bypass?
Cullen Road.
So trustee Clany is correct, that there is a bypass. So here's the entrance into Autumn Woods, Autumn Glen Drive. And there is a bypass lane on the north side of M59, so that when folks are in the westbound through lane and need to stop to make this left turn, the folks that want to continue westbound can get into this bypass lane and get around them. Where that becomes problematic at the proposed entrance to this development, which should be right about here where I'm moving my hand, is there's already an existing right-turn lane for Cullen Road. So westbound traffic can get into that right-turn lane and make the turn onto northbound Cullen Road. If, as a condition of this applicant's approval, they were to extend that right-turn lane and effectively make it into kind of a hybrid bypass lane slash right-turn lane, then you're creating conflicts in through here, because what's going to happen is folks are going to slow down to get in this turn lane to make the right turn onto Cullen, northbound Cullen. But at the same time, you're going to have other folks that are going to keep, you know, cruising along at 55 miles an hour, and you're going to have conflicts between the folks slowing down to make that turn into Cullen and folks continuing on at 55 westbound. And MDOT looked at that and looked at it significantly and realized that that's creating its own safety concerns if you were to try to extend this and make it into a bypass lane that is also a turn lane.
And so there's really no...sorry to interrupt. There's really no way that could be a recognizable benefit then, because MDOT won't allow it, anyway.
MDOT would not be looking for extending this lane. Now, MDOT is not opposed to extending the existing center-left turn lane that currently terminates just east of Cullen Road.
Right.
But they can't require it based on the volume of traffic that's coming in. They would certainly advocate that it provides a significant safety benefit, but they can't require it based on the volumes. And then the question for the township would be, if we are to require it as part of a recognizable benefit, is that proportional to the number of units that's being proposed? It would be a very significant investment to install a center-left turn lane in a state highway.
Not warranted for 11 condominiums, is what MDOT's saying, no.
You would have, based on...I'm sorry. Based on their traffic study, you would have, in the PM peak hour, which is when this would be the busiest time of day, you would have eight to 10 cars making that left turn into this development over the course of the busiest 60 minutes of the afternoon rush hour. And eight cars is not enough for MDOT to require a center-left turn lane.
I think it might be worthwhile discussion with MDOT to extend the 45 mile an hour speed limit out past that first entrance to San Marino, however, because I know people step on the gas as soon as they can, and everybody's trying to get in and out and make left turns, and that's when people are going on the shoulder of the road at 55 miles an hour, so that might be an option.
Somebody who had on collision right in that area, personally. I...anytime we can improve M59, I think is...anything we can do to improve M59 and the traffic on M59, I'm very proud of.
Yeah, in lieu of a full boulevard, I don't think there's anything else you can do.
I know, yeah, exactly. But, I mean, that...I can...right at Hack, obviously, where they finally put in the left...or the middle, left turn lane, major improvement. Funny how that happens.
Yeah, a few years late.
Yeah, two years a little late.
So what are you...what's the conclusion here? Were these just talking points, or are we including something that, other than that?
I think I'm fine with what's recommended, but, you know... I think I'm fine with what's recommended, but, you know, I think general discussion of that stretch of 59 is, you know, we need to push them a little bit more, I think, because it's going to create some issues, I think.
You talk about MDOT.
Yeah, we need to push MDOT.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I mean, MDOT's well aware that there's an issue. There's plans on the books for a boulevard through there, so that we'd have a boulevard all the way from US 23 all the way down to Michigan Avenue. It's just a question of who wants to pay for it. The voters spoke to that in May.
Speaking of that, though, have you looked at the future plans, and do those future plans affect this development from on the south side, or is it more going to be on the north side where that north side would be affected?
Right, so, if and when that boulevard ever happens, and we can all take bets on if it does, it would be, the existing two lanes that currently exist, those would turn into the eastbound lanes, and then the road, the boulevard would expand toward the north, so that you would have westbound lanes along here. That's why there is so much right-of-way along Heartland Estates through here. If you're ever looking at Village Manor and wonder why their monument sign is set back so far from the road, it's because there are plans for this to be a boulevard section someday. So, the boulevard expansion would be toward the north side of M-59.
Okay. All right, let's move page, we're still on page five. Internal vehicular pedestrian circulation. Dave, this is probably where we should have you inject the conversations-
Sure.
-of the recent meetings that we've had, and what the topic was and the conclusions were.
Sure. So, there's a, at least two provisions in our zoning ordinance that apply here, and apply significantly as it pertains to the review of the Heartland Township, the Heartland Fire Department's fire marshal. So, the zoning ordinance says that a private road with a single point of access shall not be more than 600 feet in length unless there's no feasible way to provide secondary access. The boulevard in question for this proposed project, there's not, excuse me, not the boulevard, the cul-de-sac in question is in excess of 600 feet. If you measure it from the edge of the travel lane of M-59 down to the southern terminus of the proposed cul-de-sac, you're in the 700, 750 foot range. So it is in excess of 600 feet. So then it's the obligation of the township to look for opportunities for a secondary point of access. And if you look at how this property and the properties adjacent to it have been developed, that opportunity for secondary access really isn't there, unless we want to start talking about buying a house in Autumn Woods and tearing it down so that you can put in a second point of access. So then, the township would have to take that under consideration, is there no feasible way to find secondary access for a road that's in excess of 600 feet? Another time where secondary access becomes a requirement is when you have, you cross a certain threshold in the number of units, and that threshold is 24 units. The zoning ordinance does say that if there are more than 24 units on a private road with only one point of access, then the, there shall be a second point of access. In other words, this applicant's proposing 25 units without secondary access, and that violates the threshold within the private road standards of our zoning ordinance, which says that if you're only at one point of access, you can only have 24 units or less. A lot, and, and those requirements in the zoning ordinance are meant to be consistent with the fire code and the NFPA, which, the planning commission, because this is a planned development, is, is, it's within the purview of the planning commission and the township board to deviate from the zoning ordinance, but we have to be considerate or cognizant, I guess, of the fire code along with that. Now, the fire marshal has looked at this in more detail, we've had discussions with him throughout the week, and in his reevaluation of the fire code, in the latest version of the fire code, what he's saying is, with the road width that's proposed and the mountable curb that we will have to require, then he would be satisfied that we meet the fire code with this width of road so long as we have a mountable curb. And mountable curb is actually a requirement as in our private road standards, and what the applicant is showing is the straight-faced curb. So what we would have to have in order to meet the zoning ordinance and satisfy the fire marshal, who can't get secondary access, is to have the mountable curb such that if there's ever a disabled vehicle or something up here toward the front of the entrance, he could still get his fire trucks and they could still get the ambulances through here because they could get up on the curb and get around. So the, the fire marshal would be satisfied with a 24-foot road with a mountable curb. What the planning commission has to decide is, are they willing to deviate and recommend the township board deviate from the 24-unit threshold and the 600-foot length threshold as they pertain to a private road with only one point of access? Did I-
Yep.
Get there?
Did you follow it? That's, that's been hours of meetings.
We talked about the second point of access, though, quite thoroughly through the conceptual phase of this, right? And there are some easements that go in from both developments into this property, I thought, but this didn't seem feasible for either one of those to be a second point of access.
Well, I don't know that we have access easements.
We don't.
They're not access easements.
Utility easements.
Aren't they utility easements?
Correct. I mean, this is, there's utility easements through here for the, for the pump station, maintenance easements and such, but there's not an easement that says there's, there's public or emergency vehicle access.
So that's out, pretty much.
Well-
The access part is out. The question you have, one of the questions you have to ask yourself is when he, when they go over 24 units, that's when there's a requirement of the second point of access. They have 25. Are you willing to accept one more condo unit over the limit? And then the other question you have to ask is about the road width and road length, because they are over the 600 feet. Now, in discussions, as Dave said, with the fire marshal, we discussed the pavement width proposed. The pavement width proposed, the asphalt piece is 24 feet wide. If they use, per the requirement of our ordinance, a mountable curb versus the curb they're proposing, then it is on their plan. A mountable curb, you, you see that in most neighborhoods, you drive on it. When you park in front of those houses, you're probably parking your wheels on it, but it's flat with the road, and then it just goes up a little bit. That's a mountable curb.
What's in, what's in Autumn Woods?
I would imagine a mountable curb, but I don't know.
I think it might be, because-
It's been in the ordinance for a long time.
And, right. No, I mean, I remember when Autumn Woods came in, and then I went to visit Autumn Woods, and I was alarmed at how narrow the roads were in there compared to what-
They are.
What Millpoint and Cobblestone, and of course, San Marino. San Marino has more property, but I still think that our inspector, whoever was supposed to be inspecting that, I think they were quite as wise as they were supposed to be.
The big thing, and the people from Autumn Woods can probably tell us if you have a mountable curb or not. If you have a curb and your driveway has a cut in the curb and it goes like this, that's not a mountable curb. If your curb is the same all the way down the street and you're driving on the same piece, it's all elevated the same, that's a mountable curb. But most of the subdivisions that I'm familiar with in Heartland have mountable curbs. So, what the fire marshal is saying is a 24-foot asphalt, piece of asphalt, plus a two-foot mountable curb, and a two-foot mountable curb is 28 feet.
Right.
And that, that is going to get him, that's going to make him happy with that.
Two-foot mountable curb, that seems awful.
That's how big they are.
That's extensive. Could it be 12 inches or something?
Well, no, they are two feet, just as a standard they are. There's 12 inches of flat-
Yeah, there's the gutter.
Actually, pardon, it's the gutter to carry water out of.
Yeah.
Okay, you're talking measured from Ashville.
Yeah. And actually, it's right, it's in the zoning ordinance, and the two-foot, the width of pavement and the two feet.
And the nitty-gritty details of how you design a private road includes that they shall have mountable curb.
So the curb proposed in the plan doesn't work anyways, so that curb has to be changed to a mountable curb.
Yeah, we have no objection, and in fact, a project like this with this many driveways probably should have a mountable curb, and would be happy to put that in, yeah. And 24-inch is pretty much standard for a mountable curb. They do have an 18-inch wide one, you know, this one, I think 24-inch would probably be very appropriate.
I think you should go with that, because that's what we discussed with the fire marshal. So then I guess your question becomes the length-
Yes.
600 versus the 700-plus feet, and the 25 versus the 24 units. Are you, that you can deviate from in the planned development. Are you willing to accept that?
Do we know why 600 is the number?
I think it's a carryover from a fire code, or at least a previous version of the international fire code.
It is, it is no longer an issue in the fire code, the 600 feet. It is in our ordinance, but it is in our ordinance.
So is that something we should be noting, possible change in our ordinance?
Perhaps. It can be, it can turn difficult if you're constantly trying to update one ordinance to keep up with another.
No, I know.
And that's maybe a discussion for another day.
Right, exactly. I'm just, it's a very good question that Tom is making, and to some degree, is it arbitrary? It wasn't arbitrary. Huh? It was not arbitrary at the time it was made.
Exactly, that's what I mean. It wasn't arbitrary, but now, if that's not a requirement under, so, if there was a basis for it, and that basis is no longer, for lack of a better word, valid, then I-
Assuming it was in the, and I didn't put it in there, assuming it was in there for only purposes of the fire code, that would be correct. So, I guess the point would be, if, if that is why it was in there, then that is no longer a requirement from the fire code direction. Any other reason that it's in there would, could still stand. But, comfortable with a 600, a 700-plus, 600-foot comparison, and a 25 versus a 24 unit? You wipe all that out if you just take one unit out, also, by the way, but this is a planned development, and there was some give and take on this proposal, and that's why he's at 25.
Back to the 600 foot, the fire marshal was fine with that?
Fire marshal has re-reviewed the plan and is comfortable with the 24-foot pavement, two-foot mountable curb on each side.
At 600 feet.
And, and the length of the road as it stands today.
He's satisfied that that meets the minimum of the fire code. Would he love to have secondary access wherever he can get it?
Absolutely, absolutely. But he does understand that it is not practical in this particular application.
So that kind of width of asphalt and curbs, that takes into consideration cars that are parked on the street, and even around the radiuses?
Yeah, I think probably, well, in Meadowview Estates, the roads are 26 feet plus 2 plus 2, so they're 30. So, and they seem wide to me, and I know that because of my address, so I know, I know what Meadowview is. But I would agree with Joe's comment that Autumn Woods, if I remember when we did our study of private roads in the neighborhood, in the township, Autumn Woods is extremely narrow, so, much so that I believe there are roads that may only allow parking on one side for fire marshal requirements, fire department requirements. So the fire marshal is okay from a fire standpoint. Are you okay?
So what's the part then about the 25th huck? Have we overcome that with the fire marshal as well? What's the ruling for that part about it?
The fire code only speaks to when you hit a threshold of 30, and obviously, we're not there.
No.
If, if they were at that 30 or more threshold, then the fire marshal's answer would have to be different.
Right, so he's not commenting on the 25, because it's not, it's not at his threshold.
So it's just our?
Right.
Okay.
Right. The 24 is a zoning ordinance issue, not a fire marshal issue. Our zoning ordinance says after 24, you shall do this, but this is a planned development, so you're allowed to deviate if you're comfortable with it.
I am, but I think it goes to those issues of, okay, and this is part of the planned development, so special enhancements and things like that. I'd like to hear a little bit more about what is being proposed, if we're going to have that kind of, provide some flexibility and beady, as we did with other planned developments in the community, there have been, you know, planned developments that have attributed different, different, different ways to, to benefit the community.
So why don't we get to that, because it'll be coming up real quick, and we'll stop back at this 25 unit, 600 feet.
Yeah, we-
Does that sound fair?
If we're, if we're going in order of my letter, we will definitely get to the recognizable benefits discussion.
Right, right. That's coming up here relatively quick. But are we comfortable right now, have we covered those points in that paragraph, Dave, leaving the 24, 25 unit and the 700 versus 600 feet?
I, I think we all understand what the issues at hand are.
I'm comfortable with the density and the length of the road, especially because you guys said you'll put the mountable curb in, so I'm satisfied that fire marshal, that's good for me.
How many vehicles could I park in the driveway of each home? How many vehicles can you park in the driveway?
It's a 30-foot long drive on the sides where there's not sidewalk, I guess it depends on what kind of vehicle, you know, two cars minimum.
Basically, two cars.
And a two-car garage?
Yes.
I would imagine that handles everyday traffic. I probably, if you have family gathering, you're going to see some traffic on the weekends parked on the road, maybe?
So, if, with a consideration, if we only have sidewalk on one side of the roadway, would one consideration be that, a recommendation be that if there was park on one side of the road? I'm getting concerned getting a fire truck in now, all of a sudden, with all of these considerations that we've just talked about. If we end up with cars on both sides of the street, and there's only one access for emergency, that becomes a pretty narrow entrance way to navigate with a fire truck, so. But to go back to answer your, your original question, do I have a problem with 25 versus 24? No, personally, no. But I guess I'm more concerned about this roadway now than-
The fire marshal said he was satisfied.
He said that one.
And they, I'm sure they take that into consideration. He takes everything into consideration.
So I would agree that the fire marshal should take all that into consideration, and I don't want to do his job, so, and so I would just assume if he approved it, but I, I for sure understand why, Michael, the, you know, the concerns about having cars on both sides of the road, getting a, a fire truck down and then an EMS unit. I just assume that he's covered that in his analysis.
Well, I could offer the suggestion, we just had a meeting with him today, and we are reiterating what he did say. Anything we do with this plan is going to cause a new drawing to be made. They're going to have to resubmit plans here with all these changes that we're talking about, and the fire marshal is going to be taking a look at it. And typically, our motions would require the applicant to meet the requirements of our consultants, including the fire marshal. So, if they were to proceed with what's being talked about, and I say if, I think the fire marshal's going to get another look at it, and if he doesn't like it, I think he'll probably write a letter accordingly. I can only tell you what we talked about today, and we're throwing a few variables of unsided parking and those types of things in there that I don't, I don't think, I'm comfortable saying anything more than Mike said today.
I'm never going to try to do that, to, to try to speak on his behalf, at least as far as an interpretation of the fire code.
Right, right.
So to continue on regarding 24, 25, I don't have an issue with the added number.
Okay. I'd like to come back to that after we talk like that. Okay, we can come back to that. All right, we are on page seven. Setbacks. Require a minimum spacing of 30 feet between all single-family structures in a planned development. You're proposing 20. Is the planning commission covered, comfortable with the 20? Of course, the 20 brings them closer together, probably somewhat, because you have 25 units. So, the spacing between a, Mr. Leclerc, you had made some reference to Autumn Woods in comparison of side setbacks.
Yeah, that was just from the discussion we had, I think, at the last planning commission and maybe the board meeting also.
Okay.
And I think it was mentioned maybe at both meetings, that they thought the setbacks were the same as they were in Autumn Woods.
Okay.
I'm not that familiar with Autumn Woods, but I know that was a comment that was made that between units, their minimum was the same as what ours are.
Okay. Dave, do you have any things to add to that?
The, the building envelopes in Autumn Woods are a minimum of 20 feet apart from one another, and many of the homes in Autumn Woods come right up to the building envelope line, so-
They're larger homes also.
They are.
Yeah, we're alert here. More intensive a use, in my opinion.
Comments on it then? Are you comfortable with the 20-foot side setbacks?
Yes, we recognize that during conceptual-
We discussed before.
Okay, also in that paragraph, there are no road easements shown on the proposed private cul-de-sac, so we'll need to have that added to the plan if we could. I assume, are you getting the 66-foot wide easement around the cul-de-sac? Is, or is that why it's not there?
No, on these types of- On these types of developments where you don't have quote unquote lots, I mean, the road easement would be general common element and it usually falls about a foot behind the curb. In this instance, it would fall a foot behind the curb on one side and a foot behind the curb or the sidewalk on the other side. And then there would be separate easements for utilities, but it would not be, you know, quote unquote 66 foot wide.
Dave, are you familiar with that?
Yeah, I want to look something up here.
I think that goes to the issue where you own from the drywall end.
Yeah, I don't know.
The, for the zoning ordinance, the minimum easement width for a, a private road of 13 to 24 units is 66 foot easement.
Okay. So we need to show the 66 foot easement on the plan?
If we want to comply with the zoning ordinance in that respect.
So does that then change any of the setbacks or not?
Well, the setbacks are measured from either the right-of-way line or the easement line, which is why I think when we get, yeah, assuming a 33 foot half right-of-way, this equates to a proposed front setback of 12 feet. If we measure the distance from the front of the garage to the 66 foot easement line, you get a 12 foot setback.
So are we showing the 66 foot easement line there at any point on the plan? I know you're calling out, we need it on the cul-de-sac, so.
I, I mean the entire private road.
Okay, all right. Is that a problem to draw it in there?
To show a 66 foot easement?
Yeah.
I don't think so, but I'd like to take a look at it.
Okay.
Our setbacks, as we're showing the plan, are 30 feet from the back curb.
That's what I thought they were.
I'm not saying that's incorrect. I'm saying if it were a 33 foot half easement, it would be 12 foot off the easement and the definition of how, of a front setback is from either from the right-of-way line on a, on a public road or from the easement line on a private road.
Okay, so what we need to do is get that addressed in the plan and maybe address the setback according to the way the ordinance calls it to be. It may not move the buildings.
Right, the only issue that I have with that, and I'm just thinking about on some past projects that we've done, if you have a 60 foot easement, is it 60 or 66?
66.
It goes well up the driveway and it is a, you know, a particular ingress egress easement I have seen in the past. In fact, I'm doing some work on a, a case now in another township where a neighbor may feel that he has a right to park in, in other neighbor's driveway because that is within that easement. And that's typically why in developments like this, we keep the general common element close to the back of curb and then the driveway would be limited common element, limited only for the use of that individual unit owner. And I can see maybe some conflicts in that regard if we go with a wider easement. And I, I can't say that I've done a development and I've done plenty like this where we've had a wide easement like that on this type of development.
Did you guys talk about this one before tonight?
I, if we did, I don't remember.
Okay.
Is that something that can be handled in the homeowners association?
I was going to say, could you add wording such that it would restrict that and have no effect on the easement?
Well, I think it may work better if we had maybe a 40 foot easement with a 10 foot utility easement on each side, you know, so the total would be 60, but that last 10 feet would just be for, you know, for our dry utilities, gas power, phone, cable.
I think-
It would be a deviation from the zoning ordinance, one of many that you would have to accept.
I think the way the zoning ordinance reads is the 66 foot wide easement, you can have the utility easement within the 66.
Typically, you do, yeah.
That's not, not that you can have a 40 foot easement and have a 26 foot utility easement. That's the way the wording on the ordinance sits. Is it covered, could we just cover it in the bylaws or the condominium docs of some variety that would not allow parking in the neighbor's driveway without their permission?
I'm not an attorney, but I would think probably so.
Okay. So I guess that, I'm not sure what to do with that one, other than follow the ordinance. Any other comments on that one?
I don't have any, other than to say, a 66 foot private road easement is fairly standard and they always have private driveways on them and I've never heard the argument that because it's an easement and that gives someone else the right to park in my driveway, I have to look into that one. I haven't heard that one before.
Okay, well, I would support the 66 foot wide easement, that's what the ordinance says.
Agreed.
And deal with it another way if you have to. Following on page eight, design details. Additional information would be beneficial to the township in considering approval. Might include details, are there any streetlights, entry features, common space amenities, those types of things? You mentioned a park or a area in the cul-de-sac. What are your visions for that?
A park space in the cul-de-sac, no streetlights in the development.
Okay. What's the park spacing? Is it, is this grass mowed? What do you think?
Right now, we're just showing it to be grass with some benches in that. And our plan was when we come back for final approval, we would have a more detailed park plan. But it's not going to be full of trees. We do want to have some open space for, you know, for kids to run and play in the event there is some in the community that either live there or come to visit. But we do want, you know, some places for people to sit in that area, absolutely.
Okay, we're used to seeing, you know, what the benches are, manufacturer, you know, what they look like, those types of things, so you'll need to pick that stuff out. So that we don't get into disputes of interpretations.
I'd just like to make a comment to that. Is your plan is to put that in the cul-de-sac area, the island there in some of the cul-de-sac? I've never seen those used. I don't know why that's a requirement or even a, why that's beneficial at all. I mean, you go through these, you see them from time to time and it's never used, so I mean, it seems like that some natural landscaping would be a much better use of that area to me. But, I don't know. I guess that would be one thing that's up to the homeowners association as well because, you know, I've seen them with benches and pathways and things like that, and it's never used, so.
Well, you know, that raises, that raises a good point that I just thought of when you said that, the, if you don't do anything with landscaping, just a couple of trees and benches, all the lights coming up the street are going to shine on the condominiums that the headlights are pointed at. And maybe there would be some benefit to taking a look at a different landscape plan on the cul-de-sac. I don't think we're requiring it. I'm not sure, are you, are you putting that in there to be able to count that as part of your usable open space in some way?
Well, it is usable open space, yeah, yeah. And we do, I mean, there is some landscaping in there, we do have some trees around the perimeter of it, but we're not, I mean, we're not filling it up with landscape per se.
Right, but I'm wondering if, is, is the reason the benches and the park space so that we can count it as usable and maybe we could take a look at something more like Commissioner Newsom's talking about?
Actually, we thought it would just be a good amenity for the people, you know, the types of people in this type of community. I guess we're not opposed to taking them out. The association could add them in at a later date if, you know, I guess if they felt it was needed and or necessary. But I think we were thinking more so with the, you know, the, because these people don't have backyards and I'm not sure what communities you may be talking about where they don't get used, but if there are traditional subdivisions with, you know, where people got their own backyards, kids have a place to play, you know, people have their own, you know, quote unquote space, it may be a little different than this type of community. I'm not sure what they have in some of your attached communities over off of Heartland Road. I know there's a couple of attached condos over there. I'm not sure what they have for amenities in those.
Dave, by definition of usable open space, is the cul-de-sac counted as that when it becomes a park area versus being a landscaped cul-de-sac island? Do you know?
It certainly seems like it should be. I mean, it, I don't know that our zoning ordinance says, you know, speaks to that specifically, but if, if you're providing amenities in an area, then it certainly makes sense that that area becomes usable open space by definition.
Right. I think that, that question's coming up next in the, in the review letter is the usable open space, but are there any comments on that besides Jeff's and mine? Thoughts? Want to leave it the way it is? Do you want to do, let them do what they want?
Is the way it is, park benches and landscaping?
It's park benches and trees.
And trees. Yeah, I think a consideration for the headlights, I think that was a real good point. Should be, you know, depending on the positioning of the landscaping.
I, I'd like to see how it's further developed. I think there's a way you can kind of get both happening. For an example, it could be just basically a hedge that's at a certain height that blocks the headlights and then still has the trees and still gets a sense of enclosure that you're not sitting as a fishbowl in the middle of the cul-de-sac. So maybe we could see their development further and see how that works.
All right, next up, item nine, open space.
If I may, Mr. Chair. Did we miss the discussion on utilities? Because I know that's where a lot of the conversation came up about the water extension and I know that's where a lot of the questions-
Can I flip over that? I apologize.
Starting on the bottom of page seven.
Okay.
I just know that's where a lot of the public comment questions are centered around.
Right, told them they would get their answers and I flipped right back.
That's why I didn't, I didn't want to miss it.
Well, I would have caught it here, but thank you. Okay, well, let's back up then to page seven and talk about some of the utilities, the drainage. There were some questions on detention, retention, water main, boring, tree damage.
Yeah, we'll start with the water main first. I mean, the offsite water main is going, the part that's going to be directional bored is for this location to where there is a stub about 400 feet away in an outlot from the Autumn Woods subdivision. This piece is going to be directionally bored. We will not be taking down any trees. There will be a bore pit at each end. I think the one in the Autumn Woods is in some open space right now, so this one, we will, they will be digging a bore pit there. We don't have any trees real close by. We're not anticipating losing any of these trees. We do have the, the water main a little bit into the property, so we're not directly under the trees. Quite frankly, 20 years ago, if somebody would have said we're going to directionally bore all those trees, I would have been a little hesitant. That technology has advanced significantly in the last 20 years and it's done virtually every day. I don't think there would be any issue at all directional boring under those trees as large as they are and, yeah, I don't anticipate a problem whatsoever.
How far down does the water line go?
About a 30. Five and a half feet minimum.
Okay.
Yes, my question would be, do we have any protections that if you do damage some of the natural vegetation there, that it'll be replaced?
We don't have anything. I mean, we'd certainly, you know, consider looking at something.
Okay, yeah, we might want.
Yeah, I don't know if you have something in mind. As far as the drainage, the drainage on the site is really split into two, two components. The site, the front portion of the site from about here naturally drains forward to M59. The back portion naturally drains toward Autumn Woods. When the Autumn Woods development was developed, if you look at the drainage calculations, which I have and I think Mr. Campbell may have also, this portion of the site is computed into the drainage for Autumn Woods. We are putting a pond back here. We will be releasing it at the agricultural rate, which is what was figured into the Autumn Woods drainage calculations, which is standard engineering practice. There is a structure over in this back corner which our drainage will be discharging into at that very reduced rate. These, these ponds, they are wet ponds, they are not big wet ponds, they're very small. Wet ponds offer a tremendous benefit for filtering water, for letting fines and other pollutants settle out. It is a preferred method for stormwater management. And this particular, there's only a small wet area over here and a small wet area over here. Everything in the middle is going to be dry and our discharge pipe is going to be in this area. And again, it will discharge and it will flow overland into the drainage structure that was left for this development. I don't know if there was any other questions that I would call on the water or the stormwater.
I think we'll, we'll take an offer up on the replacement of the natural vegetation. We'll have to come up with some wording of that if anything were to die or be damaged.
Part of what would have to happen is they would have to be, unless something's already in place and I don't know there to be, we would have to get a utility easement within this area. And I would certainly think that the Autumn Woods Homeowners Association in granting such an easement would do so conditional upon provisions of protections on the existing vegetation, which would be, I would think, a reasonable demand on their part.
And there was a question, if I understood it correctly, if the directional boring can't be completed for some reason, or you, whether a portion of it or all of it, and what are your options then? I mean, is there a reason why directional boring would not work here that you're aware of?
There's none that I'm aware of, no, no.
No soils of any, anything that should create an undesirable situation? I think the concern was, you're talking about directional boring and then you don't. You're going to come in with a big backhoe and dig up, you know, a big trench through the back of everybody. You're a property, but they're backyards.
Right, right. Most of that directional bore is not on our property. In fact, it's in the open space on the, on the Autumn Woods property, which is where, you know, we're asking for an easement to be obtained. So this is really the area that we're talking about. This portion here is on our property. As I've mentioned, you know, we would need a bore pit on each end where the bore would enter and exit.
Is it safe to assume that some natural vegetation would have to come out, at least for the bore pit?
You know, we did not do a tree survey down in this area. I'm not sure. Up in here, most of the trees are actually closer to the property line than they appear. I don't know specifically in this area. This is an outlot that matches up an outlot in San Marino, so there may, you know, there may be a tree or two, I guess, in that area. You know, unfortunately, you do have to have a bore pit for the, for the bore to exit. I mean, there's no way around that.
Okay, and there was a question on the, where does the water supply come from? I wasn't sure if that was the drinking water or is that the storm water? The, the drinking water, that is Heartland Township.
Yeah, so currently, Autumn Woods, there is a 12 inch water main along the M59 front edge all the way to, actually inside this property a little bit, maybe right around here where I'm moving my cursor around. The Autumn Woods developer, when, when Autumn Woods was developed, was obligated to not just bring water into, you know, his development, but actually extend it all the way across to the neighboring property line. This is what's, what we call around here, our two and through requirement and that, you know, if you're going to extend the water main, you've got to extend it all the way to the next property line so that that guy, when he develops, can extend it all the way to, to his property line and so on and so on. What we ran into with, with this particular property is there, there is a significant elevation change and a significant hill along M59, right where I'm moving my cursor. So then it became an engineering challenge of, okay, do you try to push water uphill into a dead end or do you try to push water through the hill and still hit a dead end? And what we thought was a better approach was to bring that 12 inch main all the way through the proposed development and get it down to here via that directional bore that is intended to protect the, the natural vegetation, to the existing stub for Autumn Woods so that this connection gets to here. So now you have that loop that I talked about that are beneficial for the day-to-day service, but it is also beneficial for, for fire flows and try to avoid any interruptions in fire protection service. So we are therefore meeting the two and through requirement because we are still getting it to his west, westerly property land, albeit down here. But in so doing, we're also creating that loop, which is a very nice offshoot benefit of, of meeting the two and through requirement that way. That was maybe a long-winded answer to the question of, this is township municipal water that's being extended from Autumn Woods into this development and then looping it back out.
Okay. I think, I think the questions that I have left on the sheet here relate to losing the character of the site and the view and I think we'll probably cover those when we hit the landscaping here real quick, which is coming up real quick. So if we want to jump back to the open space, which is page nine, how much of, we're used to seeing on our plans, okay, you've got this much open space, this much is usable. And I believe we have a requirement, a minimum require of usable open space and it's not included on your plans. How much of this open space is considered usable? Do we have a percentage calculation yet or have you defined it on a print for us?
We do have the open space calculation on the landscape plan.
You do? How much of it's usable?
I don't know that we have that calculation.
Right.
But by looking at it, I would say probably 60% of it, maybe a little more.
And we're used to seeing, if you could add that to the print too?
Yes.
That would be appreciated. Do we know where you're getting your, what, what you're considering open space to be?
Yep, yep, on the landscape plan, you'll see there's kind of a bubbled line that goes around. That is the open space that we use. That, that's the line that we use to calculate that, so.
Dave, are you comfortable with that? I know you've made a comment that the detention ponds are included in the open space. Is that traditionally done?
It, it's done, yes. I would be less inclined to consider it part of the usable open space. I don't know how usable a detention pond is as far as recreation. pond is as far as recreation, swimming.
I think we probably would like to have a little explanation. There was a question on the detention pond.
There is.
So maybe whether or not it's going to actually be detained or-
Yep. And we're coming to that one. Actually, we can do that right now. Is this a detention or retention?
It is a detention pond, yes, yes.
Okay. So it's going to detain the water?
No, it's not going to hold the water. I mean, it is going to slow down the water. It will be released at an agricultural rate, as I just described it. It is a detention pond, not a retention pond, which holds it 100% and never released.
Right. So it's going to be a traditional type of detention pond, or is it going to kind of take into consideration some of the new green technology that kind of takes into more of the need?
Well, the wet pond is a big feature of the new, you know, the new drainage requirements. So typically, you have either a sediment bore bay or a wet pond. So, and this is going to incorporate the wet pond portion of it, which I personally think is more effective. It does hold a low water. You know, over a pretty short period of time, you will see some natural vegetation growing up in there. I think they look rather nice. Some people don't necessarily care for them.
Okay.
But yes, a detention pond.
Right.
I just have a comment about whether or not that's usable or not. And in my opinion, it's if you've got vegetation growing and you've got wildlife using that area, then it's usable. If you've got herons and birds nesting and you've got, you know, then it's usable, in my opinion. If you've got a fence around it, it's not usable. But if you can look at it and appreciate it, it's usable.
Okay. Tom?
I'm curious what the definition of usable is.
Yeah.
I mean, we could put a fence around it, and I can't cross it with a canoe, but if, I mean, we don't advocate that. But usable, to me, means you can walk on it and walk my dog across it. Looking at it is one thing.
Dave, do we have a definition of usable?
Uh-
I don't recall one.
You might have to give me a minute to find it.
This is a PV. Remind everyone.
Yeah.
You want to come back to me on that one rather than-
That's fine.
Everybody stare at me while I try to find something.
All right, we'll jump to the landscaping. It would appear most of the questions start, I'm going with Dave's bold type, start appearing on page 10.
Oh, I got it.
Oh, go for it.
Open space usable, a land area suitable for active recreation.
You were close, Tom. So when you're doing your calculation, would you use that?
Yep.
Definition, please? Okay, great.
Does it include anything but submerged detention pond areas?
Active recreation.
Put that on the plan. We're used to seeing it on the page there where you got open space and put usable. All right, we're on page 10. We're talking about existing tree inventory along the site perimeter, including size, species, condition. The sheet includes, indicates which of the existing trees are to be removed, which is relatively limited, less than 25% are being removed. Trees to remain are inventories of a mix of cottonwood, birch, oak, and other native species, mostly inventoried and fair to good condition. Planting Commission may consider allowing this existing vegetation to remain in lieu of new plantings if it is their determination that doing so meets the spirit and intent of the respective landscaping requirements. So let's talk about the green belt along, looks like you're talking about the public and the private roads, so along 59.
Yeah, so there's kind of a two-tiered landscaping review here. One is landscaping review for a plan development in particular, but then a lot of that dovetails into our standard landscaping standards for any type of development. So probably, the key landscaping question for this development is the screening and buffering requirements relative to the residential developments on three sides of it, to the east, to the south, to the west. The zoning ordinance requires that when you have a residential development that is of a greater density than those residential developments or the zoning adjacent, then you have to meet the screening and buffering requirements of that particular section of the zoning ordinance. And what that particular section of the zoning ordinance says is that you have to create a screen buffer of a minimum of eight feet. So typically, the way that you accomplish that is to create a system of spruce trees, blue spruce, Norway spruce, some combination thereof, of a minimum of eight feet to get all the way around your perimeter and create that screen buffer. Now, obviously, we want there to be a natural element to that as well, so rather than having a wall of blue spruce trees, you want to mix up the species as best you can. You want to plant them and stagger them and cluster them in something of a natural setting, a lot of which the applicant is attempting to do here. But what they're also attempting to do is utilize the existing vegetation to remain in lieu of additional plantings. So if there were no perimeter trees along this site currently, then the applicant would be required to install 170-something trees along the perimeter, 174. And those trees would have to be of varying heights, but a minimum of eight. And we would want to see a variation of eight to 10 to 12-foot trees, again, to try to create that natural setting. What they're requesting from this Planting Commission is, rather than providing 174 trees, they're offering 59 trees, all of which happen to be eight footers, which we can talk to about that. But 54 trees, but then interspersed with the existing vegetation that's out there. And so they provided the inventory of the existing vegetation that's out there, which includes some of the trees along the east property line. I know that question came up from the public this evening of what is to become of these existing landscape trees in through here. And the applicant can perhaps speak to the fate of those trees better than I. My understanding is they intend to keep them. But what the applicant is requesting is that the Planting Commission accepts the existing vegetation in lieu of a strict application of requiring a lot more trees, minimum eight-foot trees than what they are offering, at least as far as the perimeter landscaping. And I suppose we could pause there because that is perhaps the biggest landscaping potential deficiency that our review finds.
I'll offer that I believe they should leave the trees that are there, and they should work with the existing that's there and should be given credit for some of what's there. I would hate to take it down and pile in a wall of evergreens because that would be very unattractive. So I think working with the two is a good idea. The question I came up on the perimeter landscaping was more of probably what you're putting in is some understory plants, I'll call them. There's a lot of these JC junipers that are being installed along the outside perimeter. And then you're mixing in, and so I'm not sure we need anything that low. To me, that just seems like a planting, you know, for a landscape bed plant, not a natural-looking buffer plant. The other is, is there's a tremendous number of arborvitae's being used. And an arborvitae, to me, is more of a plant you use when you're trying to screen a man-made type item, not a natural setting. Arborvitae's, to me, don't seem like a natural screening plant. They just look like a big old column. And so I would prefer to see you keep it as natural as you can with removal of all of the arborvitae's as a screening tool along the perimeter because I just don't think they're a natural setting. I think they look like a landscape shrub versus a spruce or a pine tree or something, in my personal opinion.
Which ones are the arborvitae in this plan?
Kind of these small clusters.
The TOs, they're all the clusters.
I think they're a mix of, I think they're a mix of arborvitae's and junipers.
And some U's.
And some U's. Yeah, there's all the TOs. How many TOs are there?
Grand total of 139?
There's 139 arborvitae's there.
I wonder, cluster middle looks so bad, if you've got some U's.
They look like a wall, and the whole thing is so natural looking with that natural tree line, that farm tree line, if you want to call it. I love the idea of the spruce, the pine, kind of mix it up, make it look natural, not put it in rows, but to put a bunch of junipers that are three foot high along the ground or U's, and then put all these column-type shrubs, these arborvitae's, to me, I'm going to ask you your opinion. Should've let you start. Where are you with them?
Well, we wanted to start, like, right what you're looking at, Dave, here on the east property line. In the northernmost section, right there, I don't see a continuous eight-foot screening there at all. Do we need to have that? That's what the ordinance says.
We bring that up in the letter. What I see some gaps in through here, and what I don't see is the existing vegetation filling in those gaps. And I think there's examples of that in through this area as well and other areas as well, so.
Aren't there some trees on the other side?
I don't see them inventoried. I mean, when you look over here, you can see where they've inventoried everything that they're proposing to remain, and then they're filling in the gaps.
Sure.
What I don't see is trees inventoried in through here, for example. I mean, here's where some of the existing spruce trees are that I think one of our members of the public was asking about. I don't see any indications of existing vegetation through here, for example. And then you've got one spruce tree kind of in the middle of it and a couple deciduous on the either side of it.
So I guess just kind of starting there, we can kind of work our way around. I mean, I totally agree. I think we all believe, and if there's nice existing vegetation, we want to preserve it. We want to work around it, and we want to naturally work around it. But like, starting right there, is there, are there plants on the other side we're not seeing, or?
Yes, if you could, if I could explain a little bit, if you could go to sheet two, that's the existing conditions in tree inventory plan. You'll see, if you want to blow that up, I mean, we did tree inventory all the trees around the perimeter, including all of these here.
So see, we don't see any trees there.
So these trees are all shown on there. Some of them are not on the property, some of them are on the property. And this plan also shows which trees are going to, we're going to have to remove for the development. And there are some in the back. Now, these are just the perimeter trees. If you go, like, if you go back in this corner, there are some out in here. That's the area of the detention pond. All of these trees along the fence line are staying. All of these are staying. If you go farther toward M-59, in fact, we're building a pretty good retaining wall along here to save some of these trees. And what we've tried to do is fill in some of these gaps. You know, if there's a gap there, there's a gap here. Unfortunately, we couldn't put the existing trees over on the landscape plan because there's too many. You'd never see them. So if you go farther south here, you'll see there are some more gaps. I don't know. So there's, you know, some gaps here. And if you look on the landscape plan, you'll see we've got a concentration of some trees in these areas.
Sure.
Again, to fill in those gaps between what's there, existing natural, and, you know, some areas that are a little light on trees.
So, Mr. Leclerc, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. Start.
Help me out up here, then. If we don't see existing trees here inventoried.
Correct, yep.
But then we don't see a relatively continuous screen of new proposed vegetation.
Yep, and the reason being is we focused our tree effort, and this was based on some of the comments that the Planting Commission and Board had, was up against residences. This area right here, this is a detention pond for Autumn Woods. So, I mean, we do have some trees along here. It's not nearly as concentrated as in some other areas, but we've also supplemented areas where there are trees, you know, with a continuous, you know, row of trees along this area.
Right.
And some of those areas where it's not up against anything, we didn't really focus as much on those areas.
Okay.
And back to the numbers a little bit, I mean, yes, there is some junipers and U's and whatnot in there. That is not part of the 50-some trees that we're adding. Those are in addition to. We tied out 145 trees along the perimeter that are in good condition that we are saving. Those do not include the ones that are being taken out. So if you count, you know, the 145 plus the 55 that we're putting in, we've got 200 trees there, you know, whereas the requirement is, I think, 174. I think it has more to do with the spacing, and we tried to focus those in the areas where they would do more good with some of the neighbors and what the existing vegetation is.
There's not much to screen there on that side of the property line, right? Looks like you're doing something else there. Are you trying to create a little, if you go back to the landscape plan, Dave?
Yep.
Yeah, there's not much to screen up there, but are you trying to create a little, kind of an island there or something? What was the idea?
Where's that? Around here?
Contention, one of the two.
And that's notable because there's requirements for perimeter landscaping, and then there's requirements for landscaping around a detention pond. And in this particular example, the landscape, or the detention pond is right up against that perimeter. So at that point, you're kind of intermixing the landscaping requirements for the perimeter, but also the landscape requirements for the detention pond. And that may be, at the risk of speaking for the applicant, that may be where the shrubs are being proposed along the property line, is because they're meant to meet the detention pond landscaping requirements.
Yeah, that's correct. All the shrubs that you talked about, you know, you see them in clusters here. If you go to the back detention pond, there's, you know, there's some around there also. You know, these are all shrubs, and that's part of your-
Yeah, I thought those were good. I was referring, if up front there, those are meant to be detention pond shrubs. I'd take that counter back. I thought they were along the back row, but-
Well, there is some along, there is some along the back here.
Right.
And again, you know, that is an ordinance requirement.
Right.
If you'd like to substitute those out for something different, I mean, I certainly understand your point about them not being natural.
Perhaps where the detention pond busts up against the perimeter, would it be the desire of the Planting Commission to trade, as Mr. Leclerc mentioned, trade some of those shrubs for additional trees? On those sides of the detention pond and then on the interior side?
Would your homeowners prefer to have M-59 screened a little bit better by taking out those shrubs and including more spruce and pine trees?
Well, there is some-
Looking out their back door.
There is some spruce up here. There's also a high bank up in here, so we have some natural-
Yeah, I'm talking like unit, well, 25, 24, 3, 2, 1.
Up in this area.
Because there's nothing in Autumn Woods there, so they're looking out their back window, just to the left at M-59, are they not?
You're talking about up in this area, up in here?
Yeah.
If I'm going off memory-
Yeah, there's no landscaping up in here.
There's, I think there's a lot of pine trees, if I'm not mistaken.
Right?
Could be. There's pine trees and spruce trees, and I seem to recall, and I guess what I would-
You mean along the frontage?
Yeah, well, that corner there.
And that's kind of what you're looking at is along the frontage of Autumn Woods?
Just wondering if we could've incorporated some sort of transition to that, so it doesn't look so-
I think that's what I'm trying to, I think it needs to look natural. I think it needs to look, it needs to be a big emphasis on what's happening here. These man-made walls of trees, I don't particularly care for.
So, like, for an example, I don't know, like, you brought up a good point about what do we need to screen right in that area because there already is some vegetation on the other side. The units aren't right there.
Right.
I know that we all agree that we want to get this naturalistic look. I know our ordinance talks about that even for detention ponds.
Right.
Have a natural feel. I believe the way that the plants are ordered right now around your detention ponds is kind of, you know, yeah, quote, "it's groupings," but they're very static, uniform, non-natural groupings, as you were mentioning, like the upright arborvitae's. You've got the fatter type, I get it, but they're still very much like ordered soldier rows. So I think if we can work with loosening things up, an example, if we're trying to promote wildlife, we could have some other type of plantings like the viburnums and some deciduous. We have the berries for the, you know, for the wildlife, et cetera. But right now, everything is very ordered and stiff, and we just kind of want to work with our natural vegetation, provide the screening where we need it, at least have that eight-foot height, but as the letter says, eight to 12-foot height. Well, some of that existing vegetation will take care of that. But let's loosen it up and get those goals and work together. And where we abut the property line with that detention pond, we have some flexibility in doing that. So I think it's just right now, things are just a little too stiff and ordered and not meeting the intent of what we're all going for, as a general comment.
Should've just let you talk first.
If that makes sense. I mean, that's the big overriding goal. And like you say, some uniformity with our neighbor to the east, you know, so it ties together. And you've got this terrain, you've got some existing pines out front that have been topped from the power lines. They're limbed up, so we have to kind of work with all of that and fill in the gaps.
So the other concern that I would have is, are we doing enough to buffer from the San Marino U's and Autumn Woods to some effect, but where the houses are really coming close to that property line, is that good enough? Specifically, right there, Dave, where you just had your cursor, yeah, right in that area.
So when I read the inventory, it seems like most of those trees there, this is coming from memory, are mostly birch trees. And you're kind of trying to infill with your evergreens, which is a tricky thing because they're basically all on top of each other. So you're trying to satisfy, and this is a diagram, when you get out there is when you're gonna really try to kind of arrange things to make it work. So visually, it's looking like it's working, but it's one of those things that you gotta, you know, kind of really place it to preserve the birch trees, which were the majority in that area. Because you can't plant an evergreen right underneath an existing birch tree. It just won't work.
Right, right.
So it's, it's one of those things where you have to feed through it. So it's hard for us to know right now if the quantity is exact, but the intent looks pretty natural through there, if you guys agree.
I can tell you that the plan in that area was to put these trees where there are gaps.
Right.
So they're not really close, you know, the existing trees are kind of around here, you know, so we put some, some evergreens in there. Again, to try to provide some four-season screening, you know, to mix in with the deciduous trees that are already there. You know, here, there happened to be a gap in there, so we're not going to be under a tree. There just happened to be an adequate space there to put some trees. And the same, you know, we tried to do the, with all of these because we did physically tie out, you know, each tree.
Sure.
Out there, so.
Could we go to the southern detention pond, the southeast corner?
Just before, I, one more comment on that area, just right there. I know we've had a similar issue with the development behind the church, the river church. I know it's something else now, but.
Sure.
Yeah, and where the homeowners that had those, those properties were a little concerned with the buffering and the developer worked directly with those homeowners to make sure that their concerns were met. And I think that might be an appropriate use at this time as well, or, you know, if you guys are willing to work with those homeowners that have those adjacent properties to make sure that they're, I mean, there's only a few of them there, so I don't think it'd be too much to ask.
I would agree with that. That seemed to work out over there well.
Yeah, it did.
They were, everybody was happy in the end.
Right.
Could we take the southeast detention pond, just real quick, as an example of the arborvitae's and some, I'd like to, that is a, that back wall is a double wall of arborvitae's. And it just, that's not natural. That's, I think, Sue says it ten times better than I say it, but that's what I'm talking about. I'd like to see that more naturalized.
So, I mean, are you talking about eliminating some of them?
Yes.
Or, you know, spreading them out more?
I think you need to change them with something else. And I don't know that, I probably should let Sue talk, but I'm not sure that I would take one arborvitae out and put in one spruce tree. It might be removing five arborvitae's and putting in a spruce tree or a pine tree appropriately placed.
So, so Sue, is an arborvitae even the right choice to try to look natural?
Well, the type that they picked, okay, is much more natural looking than what you're thinking of, the columns. What they've listed on here is called a techni.
Okay.
And those guys get about a six-foot width to eight-foot.
Okay.
And they're more, you know, more this way than just upright. And then there's these new ones that are deer resistant that are called the green giant that actually a lot of like, uh, down your road right now, they've got it next to the proving ground, but you don't see the, or you know what I mean where I'm talking?
Right, on Pleasant Valley Road, yeah.
Those are much larger, right? Those almost look like a spruce tree. They're, they're in between and that's a different type. So there's a lot of choices when you do arborvitae. So sometimes, like that example I'm describing, they look pretty large. And if you stagger them so they're not just in a straight line and move them in and out and you have smaller ones and bayer ones, it starts to look more natural.
Okay.
Okay? It's all about the scale of what we want to screen, you know?
Well, and then, thank you for bringing up the arborvitae. All my neighbors' arborvitae's are trimmed from about the ground up about six, seven feet where their deer have eaten them.
Which I looked at to see, yeah, in your area.
So that would be, that would be something to consider that, I mean, they eat them.
They like that and they like your yews that you've got out there, but I didn't see any evidence behind, I was looking in the neighborhoods to see if they were, they, they love all mine. I have none lot. But in these neighborhoods, I've seen a lot of yews and those plantings still making it, but that is a concern too with the deer, like you said.
So, I'm not as big on the number as I am the look. That answers your question, do we want to take them?
Would be happy to do it. I don't know, you know, if, maybe Ms. Grissom or Mr. Campbell, you know, would be happy to sit down.
It sounds, it sounds like you're supposed to be working kind of with a landscape design professional. I don't know if there's somebody you could kind of work with just to kind of see if they could help you.
Sure.
Meet the intent. There's a lot of that verbiage in our order.
Okay, all right.
I'll just play devil's advocate a little bit. And some of the higher-end neighborhoods that I've been into are very manicured and landscaped and they're very planned and they look a little unnatural, in my opinion. And I think that's sometimes the look that people are going for is it's very planned and very structured. It's not just natural growth, so that might be what you're seeing a little bit here.
Could be.
If I may, I just want to, for the benefit of the applicant, see some clarification. So, I, I see these to be gaps in, for example, here and, and through here. And I don't see those gaps being supplemented by natural vegetation here and here. Does the planning commission have any direction for the applicant on what I see to be some gap areas that are not otherwise filled by natural vegetation? Because if you look at what's there now, I mean, these folks all have trees in their backyards, but there's no other natural vegetation in through here. And then there's some gaps proposed on the applicant's plan.
What's the elevation of the, the height point of the, of detention pond versus the neighboring properties?
So it looks like they get up to one thousand forty-six in through here. Trying to catch, pick up an elevation.
Maybe six feet or so, looks like, if I count them, four, five, six feet?
Yeah, yeah.
That's a little bit of a screen there.
Yeah, it would be.
And you put a tree on top of it.
Put a tree on top, put some yews up there, and then you got, behind that is where your houses are, so that's a nice screen. I would, I would say it looks okay to me, but.
I, yeah, it's hard to know. I mean, I think the gaps could be filled in somewhat more, you know, just because. What, can I ask a question? What that one, this long continuous line that you've got in the back there, it's kind of gray and it's thick through the whole perimeter?
Yeah, that's a boulder retaining wall.
Okay, I didn't see, you called out anywhere on your plans.
Um, boy.
I, I know you called out your other retaining wall and I didn't know what it was made of, but I didn't see any reference anywhere that described it. I saw the gray change.
Yeah, I don't see it either. My text is really small, but it may not be on it.
Yeah, okay, we'll just.
That was gonna be one of my comments. We're used to seeing the retaining wall. We need the details, size, what the materials are made out of, those types of things.
Yep, that, that one is planned to be a boulder wall.
Okay. If you could get that on the plan and some detail of it. Is the one at the front a boulder wall also?
Yes.
Okay. Include that one also, please. Are we okay, we didn't, we didn't really cover too much. Those four pine trees at the front of fifty-nine that you were asking about, I would certainly want to keep those and give it credit.
Yeah, I was just about to ask about the green belt screening.
I just don't think, I don't think we should be removing anything that doesn't have to be removed.
I hope that's not how my, my comment came across. I just, they, they are asking for.
Credit.
Credit for those trees in particular in lieu of new green belt trees. And I guess my comment is, are those sufficient? And the bigger comment is, do we feel that the green belt, the intent of the green belt standard has been met along M-59?
Again, I think the intent is not, from my perspective, what I think is unusual is that to the east of your drive, you see that staggered look with your canopy trees, but then to the west of the drive, all of a sudden, everything's in a line, which I know our ordinance talks about some natural staggered. I, I don't care, but it just seems kind of funky, like it's not the same development. Is there a reason?
Does that have anything to do with the elevation?
Yeah, that, that you can't do it on the hill?
Um, but we do have a slope there.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, we are on a slope. So, and, and on the west side, there is more existing evergreens in that area than there are on the set at M-59, so.
Okay. Think you could lose.
Yeah, if you go back to, you know, to page two, there's not much on the east side as far as trees. They're pretty much all on the west side.
I guess your question is, could they at least stagger a little bit?
Just stagger a little bit more. They just kind of seem, all of a sudden, if you guys agree, it's just a little.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm just, it's subjective comment, but it's just kind of like, I know that the word, the verbiage says that part, but that's the only reason why I'm bringing it up. And it's easy to stagger it a little bit on the hill. Otherwise, I think it's great we're keeping the vegetation. I think we met, you know, what we're trying to do.
Yep. Do we have any other comments on landscaping? Dave, do we need to answer any more questions?
Perhaps a question for the applicant, and I don't feel, Mr. Gronau, I don't feel left out here this evening. Lonely over there. With this, with the sidewalk along one side of the road, it sounds like we're leaning toward the east side, does that have a, will that have an impact on the proposed street trees along the east side of the private road? Or can you fit both in there? We could fit both. Okay. Landscaping around the individual units? You know, these, these aren't gonna be single-family homes where it's up to the homeowner or how they want to plant their yard, per se, because these are condos, I assume. But there's gonna be something of a consistent landscape plan around each unit?
We do have a, a typical unit landscape plan.
Can you get that up there, Dave?
Yeah, let me get there. And then you've got the gizmo to zoom in and out over there, the silver. See her up or down, I hope.
You know who's getting it, huh?
Better give it to the landscaping lady.
Just a kind of simple landscape in front of these units that was run out by a landscape professional.
So he does have.
I'm not a landscape professional. But I know what a U is.
All right. Well, we'll just defer to Sue.
It looks great. It's more than ample.
Okay. Well, we'd like to see you do, because it is part of the ordinance and part of the PD would get this on a landscape plan page in the back.
Okay.
Anything else on landscaping?
I have another comment, but I'm just gonna wait. It looks.
Is it, is it relating to landscaping?
A little bit.
Okay.
Just, I'm sorry, but the last comment I just have a suggestion for is just your street trees, you know, you've got it covered along your street, coming in on either side and around your park. But, but what you did is you just basically kind of had, you know, a maple tree, then an oak tree, then a linden tree, then a honey locust tree. And, you know, you kind of alternated them. Maybe you could just make it a little more natural than just to alternate four types and keep repeating them, just a comment. It's a subjective comment, but that's just kind of funky, just a comment.
I would take your opinion. You guys okay with that?
That's fine.
I mean, you've got great trees, they're tough, all is good. I just want it, like, you know, places will do one street, one type and one, but when you're kind of alternating all four, one after another, it just looks kind of odd.
Okay, any landscaping questions, comments? There's a comment in there about monument sign. Dave covers all the landscaping and sign approvals administratively, right, Dave?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Where are we? We're on page twelve. Exterior lighting, there is no lighting, you said, no, no street lighting, so there's no lighting plan required. Impact on existing developments. Dave's comment, it would certainly be a good faith effort by the applicant to clearly identify that which is to be removed in the form of standard demolition removal plan and to provide a notice to the homeowners so they have an opportunity to salvage as much as they can prior to site grading. I assume this is referring to the people who have had yard and lawn encroachment under their property.
Gardens. I don't know if there's any swing sets that maybe encroach. I know some of those things got picked up on the existing condition survey. Like I say, I, we fully recognize that this is the applicant's property, but it, it seems to, there's efforts that could be made to be a good neighbor and all that good stuff to reach out to those homeowners and, and let them know, you know, where, where the extent of the property is and give them an opportunity to move some of their things around rather than take them by surprise with it.
Sounds fair.
And, and to show, you know, make it, make an indication on the, the demolition plan, you know, what the extent of, of site changes are gonna be.
So that actually, you want that, you want that on the plan?
Yeah, I think it could be indicated on sheet, the existing conditions or the.
Sheet two, I mean, we do show the trees that we're taking out along that area. I'm not quite sure. And it, it does show that, you know, some of the lawns do encroach under this property.
At the garden, unit eighty-three's garden. Is it fair to say that you'll be grading right up to the property line?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, well, then maybe that's, that's the extent of disturbance then.
Well, they are other than where all the natural trees are.
Right. At least along the south property line, the grading will be right up to the.
Okay. Recognizable benefits, Dave?
So as we mentioned, one of the, I'm sorry?
And Joe?
Yeah. One of the requirements for any plan development is recognizable benefits. And, and as I mentioned, it's, that is, the, the trade-off of, of the plan development process is the planning department, or, excuse me, the planning commission and the board have the opportunity to deviate and be flexible on a strict application of, of the zoning ordinance and the standards, things like landscaping and road length and the number of units along a private road. And then the trade-off on the applicant's part is to go above and beyond. The, the applicant has included in this submitted a letter of, of what he, he believes the recognizable benefits to be. And it's worth the conversation with this planning commission and then with the township board of whether those recognizable benefits do go above and beyond and, and are in proportion to, to what he's proposing to do. I don't want to speak for the applicant necessarily, go much beyond what was offered in that letter. But there were references to, to four recognizable benefits having to do with the, the, the environmental, energy efficient construction, the extension of the water main that, that we talked about. He speaks to filling a housing market void that currently exists in Heartland Township and precluding the potential development of a more intensive use. Some of the things that we talked about very early in this meeting, like a, a medical facility or assisted living facility or, or things like that that we have had discussions about in the past. Those would be what the applicant is proposing to serve as his recognizable benefits as a condition of a plan development.
Have you shared what recognizable benefits that the board has typically looked at or this planning commission has looked at in the past with the applicant?
I've certainly had a lot of conversations with the applicant and, and, and his representatives. I'm trying to remember if we ever had a conversation like that. It, it can be a little bit difficult to, to have those conversations because it is meant to be the, the applicant makes the offer and this planning commission, this board accept the offer. And you, you might find yourself in a difficult situation if you're telling them what, telling them what they need to offer.
All right. Let me rephrase that question. My question is, is other plan developments in our community, what have they done in the past?
So perhaps the most recent one is the Venture Church. They, some of their recognizable benefits were extending infrastructure improvements, providing a fitness trail, a mile-plus fitness trail toward the back end of their property. They did go above and beyond on their landscape plan. We talked about that a little bit. They worked with the neighbors on, on, on really enhancing their landscape plan along the east side of the, the property line. Going back further in time, when we get into the, the Ramco Gerschens and the Grand Sacra back further in time, when we get into the, the Ramco Gerschens and the Grand Sacra developments, when we're talking the Myers and the Walmarts of the world, I mean, those were obviously much bigger in, in, in terms of scale and, and dollar figures, and so they got into, uh, providing boulevards, uh, M-59, relocating Heartland Road and, and providing new traffic signals, and so there is a proportion, uh, typically in what the applicant is asking for in proportion to what they're, uh, able to offer as far as the recognizable benefit, and so what has been offered in the past, uh, certainly varies on a, on a pretty wide scale, uh, relative to, to what they're asking, asking from the township.
Well, I, I think we need, I mean, I mean, one of the things that the township has offered is not having to, having to extend the water main all the way to the, uh, to the, uh, to the west, correct?
Well, not having to extend it along the M-59 frontage, which is a requirement, I mean, we're saying-
That the township has gone out of their way, 'cause we would like to see this, this be a success, and actually, when we talked about that, it made more sense to do a loop, which is good for everybody on the water system to have that, that, that loop. So I, I'm struggling with this concept of what is being proposed, and I'm, you know, the, you know, the market, what you're presenting in terms of a market, I mean, you're, that's gonna dictate what you're gonna build here, I mean, in terms of, I don't look at that as necessarily a recognizable benefit, but I may be in the minority on it, I don't know. I'm not sure what I'd be looking for, but things listed aren't necessarily what I was anticipating to be recognizable uh, benefits as a result of the PD.
I would agree with that comment, I mean, the high efficiency and, and those types of buildings and all that are not, those are probably things you do anyways. But not a community benefit, I think they're all being built that way today, so, um, so I don't know how to answer your question either.
But I think we could, I agree with, with what you said, but I, I think a recognizable benefit could be that the applicant would work with the neighboring communities of both sides to adjust, you know, planting of trees, et cetera, that's consistent and agreeable with both, uh, Autumn Woods and, uh, San Marino, which would be a benefit, I think, much more so than, than a couple of the comments that we made here, and obviously, the water main is, is a plus.
Jeff?
Tom? When I look at that as, well, that was a trade. That's a trade, you know, in terms of, we got the loop, but they don't have to extend it down-
Well, I understand that, yeah, so.
And I think it's a little difficult, I think, with the size of this project, to really come up with anything substantial, but I do appreciate the use of, uh, you know, efficient building materials, and I definitely appreciate the high-end nature of the development, I mean, it could be 25 units that, uh, are 150 to 175, uh, for entry price, and, uh, you know, I think we'd have a much harder time doing that, but, uh, 25 units at this level, uh, this high-end level, I think, is definitely a community benefit, so, uh, compared to, they are building, uh, throughout the county, uh, some product that I don't think we want here, so I think this one fits our township a little bit better, so.
So I, I don't disagree.
Yeah. And I, I would say further, I guess, that, um, I appreciate the density, uh, because we are getting, uh, a lot of, uh, growth pressure, uh, the, the community, or, the county is generally, and when you see that, we could have 25 units on 25 acres, and so we've got, we're saving 14 acres of land, uh, right now by concentrating these 25 units on nine acres, in my opinion, and that's a benefit, that's right on the major artery, it's on, right on M-59 where all the services are in this township, so it's not much of a hardship for us to put 25 units right there, uh, and, and that's a benefit also, in my opinion.
Something else, I don't know if it, if it's feasible or not, but I noticed, um, at Autumn Woods, they've got portions of this woodchip trail, that kind of where you can almost connect to it and kinda create a secondary connection, and it almost seems like they can do the same thing and come through out of the southwest corner, um, to kinda come over to San Marino, I don't know if the communities would be interested in looking at that, but it kind of creates a broader network, not dependent just on M-59, so, like, if we look, like, in the southeast corner, that was, what did you call it, a sanitarium easement, or what was it, that's over there connecting with Autumn Woods?
There's a lift, a pump station over there.
Yep, and they've got, uh, a woodchip trail going all the way through Autumn Woods, you've seen that, where it keeps connecting, it seemed like there's a way to link up, just as a comment, I don't know if they all want it, but they all might wanna think about that other secondary linkage, 'cause I know we're really promoting that, so, um, what's going on is-
Right in there.
Yeah, I got one of those, don't I?
Yeah.
Right, there we go.
In a perfect world, I, I see some heads shaking and there.
Yeah, they might not like-
In a perfect world, all these roads should have connected.
Right, but see this, where I started?
Autumn Woods and San Marino.
I parked right there, I walked on that trail all the way down to there, and it continues down, so is there a way to kinda feed into this and create the system, just an idea, maybe you don't want it, I just, I know we're talking about, you know, and getting bigger-
You may not even have the elevations.
I think it, I think it works, I don't know, it's just an idea, that might be another recognizable benefit, that we can provide another way for, you know, kids on bike, you know, just an idea, and I did notice if you go to the other side, to the southwest, it's the same thing, there's an open space, there's an easement, and so it would be right through, there I go again, through, through and here, and then I think there's a lot out, just an idea, maybe you don't want it, see right through there?
Yeah.
And it, all of a sudden, things start to connect, as an idea, but you all have to wanna do it, you might not want it, you might not want it through your back areas. Okay. Yeah. Okay, just thinking I was looking at. Okay. Okay.
We've, we've, we've heard of-
Yeah.
We've, we've heard some of these complaints from the Autumn Woods folks about the kids helping themselves to things they don't own.
Yeah, I guess, taking off on Mike's comment, is there a willingness to meet with the few homeowners that you're real close to and see if you can work with placement of some trees?
Yes, absolutely.
I think everybody will be much happier.
Right, and just for information, the, the water main cost is not a wash, I do understand that we're not building the two and through along 59, but there is a significant delta between the two.
Is there?
Yes.
Okay.
Would it be a benefit to put some numbers behind that?
I, I thought I sent you that some time ago, and I'm just looking at my notes from the-
You, you probably have, um, I wonder if that could be included in the statement of recognizable benefits?
Sure.
I think, I think it would be a good idea to quantify that.
Yep.
Especially before it goes to the board at some point, 'cause the board's gonna look, wanna look at that.
Okay.
I know that in some, I think in some developments, it might have even been Autumn Woods, that the recognizable benefits, when that was built, wasn't that, was that, I don't know if that was an RP, that was it?
Autumn Woods was a PD.
Yeah, so, I'm trying to remember, wasn't there money set aside for certain amenities in the township?
Boy, I'd have to, I'd have to do some homework to, to get into-
I think there was, there was actually money set, set aside for, um, uh, so you, you only can do so much on your own site.
Right.
We had money that would, was put, uh, put into a capital improvement fund, uh, I think generated for parks, and that's, that started sort of like as a mitigation to doing some recognizable benefits, but those are the kinda questions I could, you could probably expect from the board, um, I don't know what, I can't tell you, but I, maybe you could look into that?
Yeah.
'Cause it wasn't with Autumn Woods, there was, well, there was-
Crestwood never went through, but Crestwood had a financial donation to-
Maybe, I knew it'd be confusing, I-
Park Fund or Trees or something.
Right. Yep. And, and part of that is sort of like a mitigation, um, you know, it's too bad when Millpoint was, that was a lawsuit, so, many years ago.
Dark lawyers.
Yeah. So, but, you know, and, and there's no, there's no recreational area in Millpoint, but we have in Cowlesville, so, there's one in Cowlesville.
Right.
Yeah, there is on the Far Street, um, farthest east, there is some common area that runs all the way up and down there, um, yeah, in that far loop, if you go, if you-
Yeah, between Chelsea and-
It's not much, yeah, there's a little strip there, but it's not much, for sure.
Okay, so, Joe, do you have anything to add between the 24 and 25 units?
No.
Like, 'cause we didn't really conclude anything more on recognizable benefits.
I'm, I'd like to see what those, I'd like to a little bit more on the recognizable benefits, actually, at least come up with something that we can-
Okay.
-take to the board, but, again, I, I-
Okay. I just had down here, I need you to come back to him. Alright, page 13, legal documents, preliminary stage in the, um, I guess it just relates to the, um, recognizable benefits.
I, I would agree with you on the 66-foot, foot-wide easement for the road, you should be able to incorporate in your condo documents a license that restricts, like a restrictive license to people's own driveways, you know, so you could, you can set that up, that's the way I would look at it.
Okay, um, we're kind of through it, are there any additional questions or comments?
Well, I just, there was a concern, uh, by, uh, somebody in the public here tonight about the ability of this builder to do this project.
Oh, yes.
It's, I don't think Mr. Rana, you've built too many projects like this in our township, is that correct?
Not in your township.
Not in our township, so this is new, but I mean, I see your name all over the place, and you're not a realtor, you're a builder, right?
John Holt.
Oh, you're both, okay, so, I mean, maybe you could speak a little bit to your ability to finish a project like this.
Well, we have, uh, the Rust is successful in the past three years with reconstruction, uh, built out, built up a community just north of our township, in fact, our township, not our hills, um, and we, uh, we were able to build and sell all of those homes, 13, very, uh, quickly and successfully. We have a community on Chilston, I think, for the Southside, that is-
I'm sorry, Mr. Rana, can we move the microphone a little bit closer? Thank you.
Uh, David? The community that we're building now, um, has 10 homes, um, in the about $700,000 range that's half-built, um, we've done that in seven months and are finding some success there, um, in fact, two of those homes are in the Ferguson County Parade of Homes, that starts tomorrow at noon, um, I think if anyone had any questions about our financial viability, maybe I would invite them to visit our communities and see what we're doing and the kinda product we build, and maybe talk to some of the people that buy it from us, I mean, short of sending you bank statements, I'm not sure how to-
Yeah, I don't think that's what we're looking for, so.
I think we're okay, I, I've never, I never lost a property to foreclosure, um, we, we survived the downturn and hung on by our fingernails, but we're, we're okay, we're, we're able to pay our bills.
So welcome to our community.
Thank you.
So, and, and what is your prediction about, um, how, how quickly you think you'll be able to sell these 25 units?
We would like to start a basement, uh, one basement every two weeks, so we would be doing all 25 in 12 months, I think, I feel the demand is there, and, uh, we certainly have more than adequate resources with our superintendents and our on-staff people that work with us, I, I think once we're in the ground, um, we're gonna sell that, that project out very quickly. 12 months is our prediction.
I'm, I'm curious on that, so would you essentially just build them in order as you go down the road, or if someone said, "I want one at the end of the call," is that-
That's what'll happen, is they'll, um, we want that lot over there, well, you can come back in, um, June, and that one will be to that one, but, yeah, there's efficiencies in building in groups of three, um, using superior wall systems, it's a pre-engineered high-strength wall system that we like to use, and, uh, we build in groups of three, so the crane can set up in one place and set all three homes without moving its platform, um, so we're gonna move, uh, we'd like to move right up one side and right around the other, in a continuous order.
So do you sell them all in advance of building them, or do you sell them in clusters of three and build, or do you get specs involved in this at all?
There's specs involved, yeah, we like to, we like to get as far through the process as possible before a customer comes.
Okay.
If you know what I mean.
Selections.
Usually when we're in the final painting stages, we like to see a customer come right then.
Okay, good deal, and for the public's benefit, there are going to be variations of the exteriors, I understand.
Uh, we have, we have, um, engaged, um, a new architectural firm, actually, out of Rochester, who, uh, have done some wonderful, uh, plan elevations for us already, and, uh, we have three now, we have three elevations with, three elevations with three combinations of colors and material differences, making nine different, um, views of the home, and then the landscape architect has, uh, indicated that he, using landscaping, he can create additional interesting variations between the homes.
Okay. Are there any other questions for them, Dave, do we, um, have we gone through everything that-
I sure think so, um, I mean, we did have, uh, reviews from our, our consultants and, and our other reviewing agencies, the DPW director, uh, the engineer, uh, the fire marshal, his comments have kind of evolved since, uh, since, since they were submitted, um, so that being said, I, I don't know that any of their comments, uh, should, you know, basically boilerplate stuff, the, the standard stuff we see, uh, things that, that would be addressed in subsequent submittals.
Okay, I'll just speak, I'm comfortable with the program that you're proposing, I, I've been on the planning commission a long time, and we don't typically advance packages and packets and recommendations to the board with this many changes that we need to make, there's a lot of changes to the drawings that we talked about tonight, I think I have 12 of them right here, some are minor, some are not, details of retention walls, those types of things, landscaping changes, curbs and roads, all those types of things, it would be my preference, I, I support the program, it would be my preference to send the applicant back to work on a submittal that comes closer to all the things we talked about tonight and incorporate it into the plan and bring it back, I don't think it will do significantly anything different to the timeline, because all these have to be done anyways, and we just, we just don't typically forward projects with this much notation to them. Jeff, you've been around a while.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah, so we've played a laundry list on this one, yeah.
I don't know how the other four feel, Joe, you're the board rep, do you have any?
Uh, my only comment is, the board would probably agree with that, you're saying, they, if it were to go in this stage right now, they would not, I mean, you'd just be, unless, I mean, at the end of the day, if you wanna send it for more comments from the board, but that's really not their, their role at this juncture, is it?
No.
No.
Although they can offer, um, typically, we're doing a lot of the work on it, forwarding a complete packet to them, and my concern is that this is not.
And that's kinda what the board really would like, is a complete package, so, I mean, if we can, I think it, it didn't sound, there's quite a bit here, but it doesn't, I don't think it's all that insurmountable, I mean, you can still make your tu, uh, your time-
No, I, it's really not very much, but timing is of the essence, um, and some of the stuff, you know, like curb details and, you know, some of the minor things, which is mainly a lot of your 12 items, um, I don't know if we could do it administratively, you know, before it goes to the board, um, you know, some of the more complex items like meeting with the neighbors and whatnot, it's gonna take some more time, but I think most of the issues that you have are pretty minor, that I would think staff could, um, sign off on.
Well, no disrespect to our staff, but beyond the, um, it's beyond what I would be comfortable with, that's, there's a lot here, and I would like to see their attempt at the naturalization plan of the landscape, to me, that's big to this project, and while I understand they can meet with the neighbors and there may be a few trees moved here and there after, but agreed upon as a recognizable benefit, I, I, there's a lot here, I mean, there's details missing, retaining walls, how big are they, what are they built with, um, the materials, all those types of things, uh, there's just a, I mean, I wrote them all down, there were, there were just a lot of changes to the drawing, and I honestly, you have to make them anyways, I don't believe it changes the timeline a whole lot.
What was your timeline to get to the board, like, you're not thinking next Tuesday, right?
No, probably the next meeting, yeah.
Um, well, and when do you have to have the packets in for the board?
I forget now, is that a week before? Dave, you would know that.
Yeah, it would be, so, it'd be a week from Tuesday.
Okay, the next meeting of this body is the 25th.
Right.
And it's gonna be a pretty full, uh, plate, um, and the packet that will be in front of this body on the 25th, I always wanna get submitted a week ahead of time, so the 18th, so now we're talking a week from today, um, and I, I, I will say, there are a lot of little things on here for them to address, get back to me, me to go through, and to do all that in the next few business days is gonna be very tight, to get it back here by the 25th, so I just don't want anyone to have, and then to answer the question of when it would need to be, the board, I mean, the, the board's next meeting is June 30th, and then the next meeting after that is, I mean, we skipped July entirely, right, so then we're into August 4th?
And that's one of the reasons why I'm concerned about it, it really, it, if we're gonna move it along and these things need to get corrected, I don't disagree with that, and I don't wanna put pressure on, you know, this body needs to get there, make sure they're all satisfied that everything's taken care of, but, um, at the same time, we do have this issue with the board, so, well-
The board has said they're not opposed to holding a special meeting in July if necessary, I mean, they're aware-
We can do that.
They're aware that the summer schedule-
I'll, I'll just interject, we can have all the conversation, I've been doing it too long, I've been doing this over 10 years, and we've never sent a packet to the board that looks like this, and I'm not, I am in favor of your project, and I will vote in supporting and recommending your project, but if we're gonna vote to forward it tonight, I will not, and it's not anything other than to say, we have procedures to follow and we send our information, I appreciate your timeframe, a lot of this is stuff that could have been dealt with before, a lot of it's stuff that came up tonight, and I totally understand what you're saying, but there are still procedures we follow, and we have a way of doing business that I'm willing to work with, but this is way beyond what I'm willing to work with, there are things here, this is- There are things here, this is, this is the end of it. When it gets done with preliminary, there isn't much left at final for us to do. And I'm not willing to let it go without seeing it again with all the things we talked about.
Yeah, and I wouldn't feel comfortable recommending it going to the Board at this juncture.
I would prefer to see the Board, and I wouldn't be at the meeting, I would prefer to see the Board hold a special meeting, of which I can't guarantee they would do, to help a timeline, but we have to send them what we have been sending them for years. That's why we have the relationship we have. So I feel very strongly about it. I feel very strongly that you have a good project, but I feel very strongly that we also have procedures to follow.
Could we just go through some of those dates again? And if I could just get a little clarification, I mean, there's several items, as you had mentioned, 12 or so. Some of them are really quick items, some of them, like meeting with the neighbors, you know, that's obviously going to take more time, and I guess I'm just wondering if some of those things.
The items that I came up with, real quick, please feel free to add if you have. We now have to show sidewalks on one side of the road. Two, we have to delete the woodchip trails. Three, we have to change the road construction to reflect nonable curbs and remove the F-style curbs that you have on there. We have to show a 66-foot wide road easement, including the cul-de-sac. We have to deal with the park and the cul-de-sac, what materials are you providing? If they're benches, what are they made of? How are they constructed? Usually we see pictures of that. You're changing the landscaping on the cul-de-sac. We have the comments and we need to deal with the damage to the natural features with the boring, how are we going to deal with that? We need usable open space calculations on the plan. We'd like to see the landscape plan naturalized. We have retaining walls that are on the plan that are not identified as to their size, they're not identified as to what the materials are. We have individual unit landscaping, we have 25 buildings that still have a landscape plan that's missing. We have neighbors that need to be dealt with in regards to communicating. My comment on the naturalization, if the planning commission agrees with that, is do your best stab at naturalizing that landscaping plan on the perimeter. We agree that that's okay and we have an understanding in the recognizable benefits that you're going to work with them. We'll allow them to tweak that based upon an agreement with the neighbors, but we need to see a plan. And then we also talked about, including in the demolition plan, the neighbors that have had encroachment of their gardens and placecaps and all that, we need to know who those people are, where are those things, so we can make sure they're dealt with. A lot of them are small, a lot of them are, but I'd never send this to the Board with this. And I support your plan, I just don't, it's not complete yet.
Quantification of the recognizable benefits, too.
Quantification of recognizable benefits also. That was quick, I could, probably Dave could type it up in an email, or I could and we could get it forwarded to you, but.
I would appreciate that, yeah. I think the only one that's going to take us some time, even for a couple-week timeframe, is the, you know, meeting with the neighbors and coming up with, you know, some ideas that they might have. And I'm not sure, does anybody know if Autumn Woods has an active association and San Marino?
Yes, they do.
Yes, and yes.
Okay, right.
Yes, they do. And I, as a planning commissioner, would be willing to accept the naturalized perimeter landscape plan as your presentation before you meet with them. Give it your best crack. With an understanding in your recognizable benefits, you're going to quantify the fact that you're going to meet with them.
Okay.
And tweak it, and we're going to allow you to tweak it as long as they agree with you when you're done with it.
Right, okay.
We'll agree to what they agree to.
Okay, so we could meet with them after our preliminary site.
Yes, yes. You just give us your best stab at it.
Okay, all right.
And then we'll let you work with them after that date.
Okay, all right. Okay, so I've got 12 items, and if you could get me that list, that would.
Sure.
I'd appreciate that.
Was one of those 12, I'm sorry, was one of those 12 calculations on open space?
Usable open space?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm just missing number seven, so, I was right as fast as I could go.
Four, five, six, seven. We talked about on the page.
After the landscape in the island area?
Yeah, there's the damage to the natural features, the line boring, I don't know how we're going to do anything with that, other than a statement that it's going to be taken care of if there is damage to the natural features.
Yeah, perhaps a, yeah, we can come up with some ideas on that, how to memorialize that. I think we all understand what we're trying to accomplish. It may be somewhere I want to touch base with the Township Attorney and just maybe get his perspective on how we can memorialize something to that effect. Because it is a little tricky, I mean, we're talking about, you know, off-site changes and protection and, you know, if one of those trees dies 10 years from now, is it still this developer's obligation? I mean, I'm just throwing out oddball scenarios that I want to.
Yeah.
Get a better idea on.
Right, and I would say no. That happens.
Right.
But I would like, I would like to add to the people that are at home listening and that are here tonight, I've been in every meeting for proposals on this piece of property and, and there were a lot more intense uses that were proposed for here. And I'm not defending what they're bringing, I'm just telling you, there were, we had a lot of opportunities for things to happen here. And we were always concerned with the neighboring properties. And I would have to agree with Commissioner Newsom's comments on the quality of the product being proposed, the quality of the development, I believe, is, is something that we'll all enjoy. It may be more dense than what you have, but I think together, we can probably come up with something that you'll look at and go, you know what, this wasn't too bad. Lot better than a big building in your backyard.
And what is that submittal date for the next planning commission? Did we?
Dave, what would that be?
A week from, Thursday.
Today.
A week from today?
Today.
The next planning commission, so a week from next Thursday.
Well, do you want a review letter from me? I'm not trying to be a smart aleck, I.
No, 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 I think you had already made that clear, that one's pretty tough for you.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's other things going on, and if, even if Mr. Leclair nailed this on the first try, got it to me first thing Monday morning, we would be, you know, and the other thing is, we're going to get this back to the fire marshal, I don't know what his schedule looks like. It would be tough for me to commit to you that Mr. Leclair could submit a revised package and I could submit a review letter that I could feel okay putting my name on and get that turned around by 2 o'clock next Thursday, so that you would have a full planning commission package to review a week ahead of the meeting on the 25th.
Let the Commissioner and the Planning Director work that out and take.
They can't, I can tell you, I would agree with our Planning Director that that's awful tough. We have a lot of meetings lately. Get it in as quickly as you can.
From what I'm hearing, you're telling us that it's going to be the first meeting in July?
I have to be realistic and say that's what we're looking at.
And then the Board does or does not meet in July?
Yes, they do.
There is not a, no, there's not a meeting scheduled in July.
Oh, there is not.
Well, because the, what would have been the regular meeting, and help me out, Trustee Clayton, what would have been the July meeting fell over the 4th of July weekend, so they opted to move it back to June 30th, so. But they also recognized that, as, when they went to the summer schedule of one meeting per month, they recognized that there's a lot going on in front of this planning commission and they were not opposed to holding a special meeting if necessary to.
If we need to have a special meeting, we could probably pull, I, I, I think we can look to put, having this, calling a special meeting. We only need to give 18 hours' notice, so, we can do that if we needed to do that. We'd give much more notice in July, you know.
So the PC meeting in July is.
Well, the 16th and the 30th.
So July 16th, any plans?
I would still say.
July?
I would still say ASAP.
Okay.
For your benefit, for my benefit, for these folks' benefit.
Very good. Any questions, we're all here to help you, so, you have Dave's number here. All right, thank you, and we look forward to having you back here real soon. Okay, next up, item A, old and new business, I believe there's nothing on there. Item nine, call to the public. Anybody in the room wish to add any comments? Can be on anything tonight, if you have any additional information you'd like to share on what you just saw? Absolutely. If we, get your name, we just need your name now and your, and we'll get your comments down.
Again, John Wyeth, 1944 Culver Ridge Drive. Just want to thank the planning commission for taking a look at this development and brought, same, a little disappointed with the overall size of the development, I think maybe a few less units might have addressed some of, even the concerns you had here with traffic counts and fire safety. I didn't think anybody really addressed the setback regarding the properties and the neighboring property lines, like again, Unit 10 and along the cul-de-sac. You talked about the setback between the properties of 20 feet, but nothing about the distance to the property owners that are impacted right along the property line. However, Commissioner Newsom, I think your idea of having him approach the neighboring property owners and address some of the landscaping issues, I think was a, was a great idea. I would like to see a focus on the natural barrier, but also with pine trees, because a lot of the existing trees are deciduous, so they lose leaves, so probably in Michigan here, about five, six months out of the year now, there's really not much of a tree barrier, even with all those natural trees. I also like your comment regarding the possibility of capitalizing some of other improvements, maybe having the developer put funds into adding sidewalk to connect to the downtown area, putting funds towards that as an additional item. There's a lot of property there that could be extended to get towards the target sidewalk, as well as really focusing on working with them on the landscaping. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, my name is Wesley, and I just wanted to say thanks for the great detail, especially with the landscaping and your concern for how it's going to look, so, we really appreciate that. I'm on the Autumn Woods side, and just my only thoughts were that because of some of the zoning ordinances, that we are seeing deviations, too, it just kind of felt like it would be an almost perfect match if they dropped to 22 units. Kind of a similar message, but you could even take out that unit that's closest to San Marino, that could be one of the three that's removed. And then perhaps two more along the long end of the road to bring it forward so the road could get to 600 feet, and then you'd be under your 24 and you'd be under 600 feet, and it would just be a lot less deviation, and I understand the finances of it, and we're actually really fortunate that he wants to build in our area. It's great for the economy to build a high-quality product and be able to sell homes, so, it's a good thing. But I think for more usable space, the safety and also the value of the tenants that would be moving in could be maximized, maximize their value if we went to 22 and avoided some of the deviations, so. But thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close, call the public, we'll move to item 10. Dave, planners report.
So we talked a little bit about upcoming meetings, and just to give you a heads-up on what those are going to look like, we did go ahead and schedule two public hearings for the June 25th planning commission meeting. One is for the special land use for, site plan with special land use for the new Speedway. And when I say new, I mean they would be demolishing their existing facility at the southwest corner of, not Bergen, 59 and Old 23 and rebuilding a new store, new pumps, overhauling that site. The other public hearing will be the amendment to the Venture Church Plan Development for Walnut Ridge Estates. The, this is a concept plan that this planning commission has seen before, 64 units behind the Venture Church property. They're now at the preliminary stage of the plan development amendment process, that requires a public hearing, just like this evening did. And so those are the two public hearings that are scheduled for June 25th. Notice showed up in the newspaper yesterday. And then looking at July 16th, two more public hearings. One is for the update to the comprehensive plan, which we scheduled that public hearing at our meeting in May. And then the other potentially is for the site plan with special land use at the corner of Clark and M59, the gas station with the drive-through Dunkin' Donuts slash Baskin-Robbins. Mug and Bops is the name brand, they've got facilities in Howell and in Brighton, so this would be at least their third one of these where it's the gas and the drive-through Dunkin' Donuts, Baskin-Robbins. That's actually two special land uses then, because it's the fuel station and it's the drive-through use, so site plan with two special land uses, one public hearing, a grand total of two public hearings at that meeting on July 16th. And if everything falls into place, a reevaluation of the site plan that we saw this evening. In addition to all that, we're seeing lots of concept plans that are getting floated around. We had a meeting with Mr. Chair Fox today on one of those, in addition to lots of calls and lots of tire kicking, so I think the fun continues with the significant surge in economic development proposals in the Heartland Township. And in front of you, you should have the letter from the Lewis County Planning Department notifying all their communities that they, of their intent to work on their master plan as well. They're required to send that to, specifically to the planning commission chair, and we provided a copy for all the planning commissioners, just so they are aware and welcome them to get involved in that process. And I have not forgotten about ordering the tablets for the planning commission, the Board did approve my budget to do that, so I got to get on, get on Microsoft's website and order the tablets for the planning commission, so that if you so desire, you can have our planning commission packets in front of you at the meeting. That is everything that's on my list of things to mention as part of my planners' report.
All right, well, thank you. Committee reports, anybody have anything?
I'm not on a committee.
All right, no one? Well, you can still have a comment. All right. Motion to adjourn, please.
Delve, support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion carries, thank you.